Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, July 19th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And meetings are open to the public. We welcome you to join us or to view us live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. We have six members present at this time. We need ten for a quorum and to conduct official business. As we await the arrival of additional council members, this being Friday, we do have the custom of conducting special recognitions and presentations for individuals and organizations that we'd like to highlight here in the city of Los Angeles. We have 13 scheduled presentations today, and I'd like to begin by recognizing Council Member Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, there are two presentations I have the pleasure of making today. We do this with a great degree of respect for those who contribute to the life of our city from a variety of vantage points. The first presentation is made to a member of the staff of CD-8 who has served in that capacity since our beginning here in 1991. She's served in a variety of positions, always bringing energy to her task, having evidenced loyalty that's beyond question. In addition to that, it's worth knowing that this individual and I first met some twenty years ago when I was teaching high school at a MacLitt Hart, and her daughter was a student there. And the same level of energy and intensity and concern for achievement was displayed. And then we had the opportunity to take advantage of her clerical and secretarial skills and the rest in large measure is history. On such special occasions, we invite those who enjoy the status of being alum of the CD-8 Council Office and premier among them is my former Chief of Staff, now one of the Vice Presidents for External Affairs at the University of Southern California. To make the presentation to Pat Correa is Carolyn Webb de Mecias. Please welcome her.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be back this morning in front of this chamber in the Council and the honorable Council Persons to present to a very special person a certificate of appreciation for the city of Los Angeles. And I am going to take the liberty of actually reading to you about Ms. Patricia Ann Correa because she has had a career that is very worthy of our taking the time to listen to. So if you will bear with me. Resolution Patricia Ann Correa. Whereas Patricia Ann Correa has had a long and distinguished career serving as the first African-American Secretary for the Adjutant Colonel for the first U.S. Army Quartermaster on the Governor's Island in New York from 1959 to 1961. And whereas from 1961 to 1964, Patricia served as the first African-American Secretary to the Project Manager of the Mercury and Apollo Space Program for the North American Aviation Research and Development, now Rocketdyne, located in Canoga Park. And whereas in 1966, Patricia served as Secretary to the Education Director and Deputy Center Director at the Los Angeles Job Corps Center, where she assisted the Center Director in compiling expenditures for the $14 million budget, maintaining attendance for 700 students, and developed several policies and procedures that were eventually used at other job corps centers in the western region. And whereas Patricia left the Los Angeles Job Corps Center to start her own business, we do it in detail, where she provided expertise to small businesses on developing office policies and procedures, interviewing applicants for secretarial and clerk-type positions, event planning, and developing company procedures. And whereas Patricia started her career in the Office of the Eighth Council District in August 1991 as an executive assistant to Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, and in 1995, Patricia became the Senior Administrative Assistant in the District Office, where she provided administrative support to the Constituent Service Manager and Area Coordinators. Whereas in her spare time, spare time, Patricia served as Secretary for the West Imperial Neighbors Executive Board, served two terms as the first female president of the Cape Verdeans of Southern California, an organization composed of descendants from the Republic of Cape Verde, West Africa, and was one of the founding members of Los Angeles Southwest College. And whereas Patricia was recently appointed by the U.S. Cape Verdean Ambassador, the Honorable Jose Brito, to be a member of the National Advisory Board for the Republic of Cape Verde. And whereas Patricia is the mother of Lieutenant Derek Juan Hernandez of the Boynton Fire Department in Boynton, Florida, and Monique Rene Fisher, a studio teacher in the entertainment industry in Los Angeles, and the grandmother of Michael Hernandez and Dimitri Cornelius Fisher II and Nicole Brianna Fisher, now therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend Patricia Ann Correa for her devoted and valuable service to the Eighth Council District and the city of Los Angeles, and extends best wishes for a long and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Do you want to have a word? All right, Pat is going to have just a brief word, but we're going to ask her family and all who are here, her supporter and staff, if you would just simply stand, we'd like for you to stand so we can recognize you at this time. Give them a warm round of applause, won't you?
To all the Council, to President Padilla, this is a big honor for me to be here today. Being on this Council floor and to be received, to be on this end is really heartwarming. To Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, when he decided to run for the office and I heard of his commitment and contract to the community, I said, "I wanted to be on your staff. I didn't care what capacity because I wanted to be part of that history." It has been a challenging, rewarding, exciting ride, and I want to say thank you, Councilman, for letting me, allowing me to be part of your fantastic professional staff and for all of the accomplishments that you have made and for allowing us to be part of that because you are going down in history in the city of L.A. God bless you.
And now, Mr. President, may I proceed to the second presentation that I'd like to make today, and I'm going to call forth Bishop Leon Ralph. Would you welcome him, please? Mr. President, Members of the Council, Bishop Leon Ralph, as some of you may or may not know, served as a member of the California State Legislature in the Assembly from 1966 to 1976. He was and continues to be known as an advocate for those who are in need. Bishop Ralph was active in the Civil Rights Movement in the 1960s and '70s and served as an organizer and a demonstrator, and served as one of those who represented the state of California at the memorial services for Dr. Martin Luther King in the late '60s, 1968, to be specific. His tenure in the state legislature was distinguished by a number of important pieces of legislation designed to improve the quality of life for the people of the state of California. He authored legislation to implement ethnic studies for California community colleges. There's a Ralph Civil Rights Act which prohibits violence against people based on race, creed, color, and national origin, gender, sexual orientation, and also the Farm Labor Camp Regulation Law which improved working and housing conditions for farm workers. At the peak of his career in the legislature, he received a calling and left for the ministry. He was ordained in 1976 and consecrated to the Office of Bishop in 1986. And along the way, he serves as the President of the Inter-Dominational Alliance, Ministerial Alliance of Southern California, President and Founder of Leon Ralph Associates. And as it moved on, became the President-CEO of the Los Angeles Opportunities Industrial Center, and he's been doing that since 1993. This is an affiliate of the National Civil Rights Organization, Social Services Organization, which provides vocational training for unemployed and low-income individuals in our area. And his responsibilities include the range of things as a CEO has to do, development, fundraising, community relations administrations, etc. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, Members of the Council, I think it's important to recognize that Bishop Ralph has played a role in a variety of ways, not the least of which partnering on affordable housing projects, one of which is in the Eighth Council District of a very nicely designed, well-appointed project that came in the wake of the civil unrest. We cleared the rubble and up came a 46-unit affordable housing project called the Adams Congress Apartments. Having earned a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Redlands, a master's of identity from City University, and additional graduate studies at Fuller Theological Seminary, Bishop Ralph has earned honorary degrees in humanities from the University of Santa Barbara, as well as the divinity degree from City University. And I think it's well worth our knowing that here in our city, we have a great asset, a devoted civic leader and one who has paused to give his life to causes that are redeeming. It is with my honor that we make this presentation to Bishop Leon Ralph for what he has done and is by adoption of this resolution that the Los Angeles City Council does wish to commend you, Bishop Ralph, for your outstanding commitment to this community and for the valuable contributions you've made, not only to the California State Legislature but as a minister of the gospel, and we say to you our very best wishes for all you continue to do in the future.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, there are two presentations I have the pleasure of making today. We do this with a great degree of respect for those who contribute to the life of our city from a variety of vantage points. The first presentation is made to a member of the staff of CD-8 who has served in that capacity since our beginning here in 1991. She's served in a variety of positions, always bringing energy to her task, having evidenced loyalty that's beyond question. In addition to that, it's worth knowing that this individual and I first met some twenty years ago when I was teaching high school at a MacLitt Hart, and her daughter was a student there, and the same level of energy and intensity and concern for achievement was displayed. And then we had the opportunity to take advantage of her clerical and secretarial skills and the rest in large measure is history. On such special occasions, we invite those who enjoy the status of being alum of the CD-8 Council Office and premier among them is my former Chief of Staff, now one of the Vice Presidents for External Affairs at the University of Southern California. To make the presentation to Pat Correa is Carolyn Webb de Mecias. Please welcome her.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be back this morning in front of this chamber in the Council and the honorable Council Persons to present to a very special person a certificate of appreciation for the city of Los Angeles. And I am going to take the liberty of actually reading to you about Ms. Patricia Ann Correa because she has had a career that is very worthy of our taking the time to listen to. So if you will bear with me. Resolution Patricia Ann Correa. Whereas Patricia Ann Correa has had a long and distinguished career serving as the first African-American Secretary for the Adjutant Colonel for the first U.S. Army Quartermaster on the Governor's Island in New York from 1959 to 1961. And whereas from 1961 to 1964, Patricia served as the first African-American Secretary to the Project Manager of the Mercury and Apollo Space Program for the North American Aviation Research and Development, now Rocketdyne, located in Canoga Park. And whereas in 1966, Patricia served as Secretary to the Education Director and Deputy Center Director at the Los Angeles Job Corps Center, where she assisted the Center Director in compiling expenditures for the $14 million budget, maintaining attendance for 700 students, and developed several policies and procedures that were eventually used at other job corps centers in the western region. And whereas Patricia left the Los Angeles Job Corps Center to start her own business, we do it in detail, where she provided expertise to small businesses on developing office policies and procedures, interviewing applicants for secretarial and clerk-type positions, event planning, and developing company procedures. And whereas Patricia started her career in the Office of the Eighth Council District in August 1991 as an executive assistant to Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, and in 1995, Patricia became the Senior Administrative Assistant in the District Office, where she provided administrative support to the constituent service manager and area coordinators. Whereas in her spare time, spare time, Patricia served as Secretary for the West Imperial Neighbors Executive Board, served two terms as the first female president of the Cape Verdeans of Southern California, an organization composed of descendants from the Republic of Cape Verde, West Africa, and was one of the founding members of Los Angeles Southwest College. And whereas Patricia was recently appointed by the U.S. Cape Verdean Ambassador, the Honorable Jose Brito, to be a member of the National Advisory Board for the Republic of Cape Verde. And whereas Patricia is the mother of Lieutenant Derek Juan Hernandez of the Boynton Fire Department in Boynton, Florida, and Monique Rene Fisher, a studio teacher in the entertainment industry in Los Angeles, and the grandmother of Michael Hernandez and Dimitri Cornelius Fisher II and Nicole Brianna Fisher, now therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend Patricia Ann Correa for her devoted and valuable service to the Eighth Council District and the city of Los Angeles, and extends best wishes for a long and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Do you want to have a word? All right, Pat is going to have just a brief word, but we're going to ask her family and all who are here, her supporter and staff, if you would just simply stand, we'd like for you to stand so we can recognize you at this time. Give them a warm round of applause, won't you?
To all the Council, to President Padilla, this is a big honor for me to be here today. Being on this Council floor and to be received, to be on this end is really heartwarming. To Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, when he decided to run for the office and I heard of his commitment and contract to the community, I said, "I wanted to be on your staff. I didn't care what capacity because I wanted to be part of that history." It has been a challenging, rewarding, exciting ride, and I want to say thank you, Councilman, for letting me, allowing me to be part of your fantastic professional staff and for all of the accomplishments that you have made and for allowing us to be part of that because you are going down in history in the city of L.A. God bless you.
And now, Mr. President, may I proceed to the second presentation that I'd like to make today, and I'm going to call forth Bishop Leon Ralph. Would you welcome him, please? Mr. President, Members of the Council, Bishop Leon Ralph, as some of you may or may not know, served as a member of the California State Legislature in the Assembly from 1966 to 1976. He was and continues to be known as an advocate for those who are in need. Bishop Ralph was active in the Civil Rights Movement in the 1960s and '70s and served as an organizer and a demonstrator, and served as one of those who represented the state of California at the memorial services for Dr. Martin Luther King in the late '60s, 1968, to be specific. His tenure in the state legislature was distinguished by a number of important pieces of legislation designed to improve the quality of life for the people of the state of California. He authored legislation to implement ethnic studies for California community colleges. There's a Ralph Civil Rights Act which prohibits violence against people based on race, creed, color, and national origin, gender, sexual orientation, and also the Farm Labor Camp Regulation Law which improved working and housing conditions for farm workers. At the peak of his career in the legislature, he received a calling and left for the ministry. He was ordained in 1976 and consecrated to the Office of Bishop in 1986. And along the way, he serves, has served as the President of the Inter-Dominational Alliance, Ministerial Alliance of Southern California, President and founder of Leon Ralph Associates, and as it moved on, became the President-CEO of the Los Angeles Opportunities Industrial Center, and he's been doing that since 1993. This is an affiliate of the National Civil Rights Organization, social services organization which provides vocational training for unemployed and low-income individuals in our area. And his responsibilities include the range of things as a CEO has to do, development, fundraising, community relations administrations, etc. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, Members of the Council, I think it's important to recognize that Bishop Ralph has played a role in a variety of ways, not the least of which partnering on affordable housing projects, one of which is in the Eighth Council District, a very nicely designed, well-appointed project that came in the wake of the civil unrest. We cleared the rubble and up came a 46-unit affordable housing project called the Adams Congress Apartments. Having earned a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Redlands, a master's of identity from City University, and additional graduate studies at Fuller Theological Seminary, Bishop Ralph has earned honorary degrees in humanities from the University of Santa Barbara, as well as the divinity degree from City University. And I think it's well worth our knowing that here in our city, we have a great asset, a devoted civic leader and one who has paused to give his life to causes that are redeeming. It is with my honor that we make this presentation to Bishop Leon Ralph for what he has done and is by adoption of this resolution that the Los Angeles City Council does wish to commend you, Bishop Ralph, for your outstanding commitment to this community and for the valuable contributions you've made, not only to the California State Legislature but as a minister of the gospel, and we say to you our very best wishes for all you continue to do in the future.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, the distinguished Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for this honor. It's indeed a privilege. I thank my family. We have, this happens to be our third biannual Ralph family reunion. We have people, will you stand, the Ralph family, we're from North Carolina, New Jersey, Virginia, Washington, D.C., Maryland, they are here with us today. I thank you for this. It's significant to us, and I'll just take 30 seconds, that our grandfather, who we celebrate today, happened to have been born free in 1852 as one of 300,000 free African-Americans prior to the Civil War in the South. And within our family today, we count not only a legislator, but we have doctors, lawyers. Shirley Ralph is one of our, she's not here with us today, Mike Ralph, we have two actors within the family, and so we are very thankful for that. But it's what we were taught in our homes as we grew up that really causes us to want to contribute to society that we are part of, and so I thank you for this. Someone asked me if I was going somewhere, and I said, "No, not that I know of," and I hope that is not what this means, but I thank you for this and I appreciate it. The Councilman, I thank you so much for being the great representative. He's going to represent the great 48, which I represented at one time, and so I'm very honored to be here with you today. Thank you so much.
Before you go, before you go, Councilmember Grohl.
I just wanted to add my congratulations. We've had the pleasure of working together over the years, and you really truly are a beacon of light on issues of housing and job training, workforce development, and I just wish we could clone you throughout the city, but want to stand up as well and congratulate you and thank you for your commitment to the city of
Before you go.
Bishop Ralph?
Before you go.
Before you go.
Councilmember Grohl.
I just wanted to add my congratulations. We've had the pleasure of working together over the years, and you really truly are a beacon of light in, on issues of housing and job training, workforce development, and I just wish we could clone you throughout the city, but want to stand up as well and congratulate you, and thank you for your commitment to the city of Los Angeles, what you have done, and that we're going to continue to ask you to serve, and appreciate Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas acknowledging you today, so thank you for all that you do.
Mr. Holden.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, Leon Ralph is one of the originals who represented the state of California from the south-central area. We had what is called a two-four plan, and he was one of the four members of the Assembly, and we had two members of the State Senate. When that program was adopted through forced reapportionment, as it relates to one person, one vote, I won't say one man, one vote, because we, at that time, we had one state senator for Los Angeles County, just one, and now we have, I think, 14 or so, or more. The fact of the matter is that Leon Ralph, with Merv Domily and Gus Hawkins, blazed the trail for the community in Sacramento. And then, of course, in doing so, he represented all people who were similarly situated, those who had problems, those who were unemployed, those who have been neglected, those who didn't have a voice, and yet then he was not known as a bishop, but he acted like a reverend in that position, and his family should know that. He elevated himself through the political, I won't say maneuvering, but negotiation becomes Chair of the Rules Committee. And at that time, when you say you were Chair of the Rules Committee, you were powerful. If anything went out of the Rules Committee, that even though it was a House of 80, one person had to sign off, and that was the chairman of the Rules Committee. And I must tell you that during the time I was there serving with you, Leon, you were really my best friend, because you were Chair of the Rules Committee. And I never forgot all those bills that I introduced that got to the Assembly, and they were permitted to go to the Policy Committee. So I want to thank you for all you've done for me, and certainly for the people of the state of California, for my community, and of course, you can talk to God better than I can, because you're a bishop, but, you know, I'm on my way out, say a good word for me. Thank you.
Should we start now?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, for those presentations. Members, before calling upon the next presenter, we have achieved the quorum. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Bernson, Galandrik, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Holden, Barnes, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Billy, Thomas, Weiss, Stein, and Padilla, 13th members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
We are officially in session. Before proceeding with the next presentation, let's go through the agenda and dispose of consent items. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Holden moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Item number one on the regular agenda, there's a request to refer that matter to the Department of Transportation and ask for an impact report. This comes from Councilmember Bernson.
Request to refer the matter back to the department without objection. So ordered.
Item number 14, a request that this matter be continued till August 6. City Attorney has opined that it will require notification.
Okay, request to continue, item number 14. Miss Grohl.
Could we call number six special, and we're not up to 24 yet, are we?
We're not there yet, we're continuing items. Any objections to continuing item number 14? Without objection, so ordered.
Mr. President, items numbers two through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number three, I believe, a motion is required, you may wish to call that special, as well as 23 and 24, where there are two reports on one file.
Members, items two through 24 now before us, public hearings haven't been held. Are there any specials, or are there motions on items 23, 24, and item number three? Mr. Stein.
To July 26th, item 21.
Request to continue, item number 21, that would be for one week.
Yes.
Without objection, so ordered. Mr. Holden.
Two and 15, three has already been called special.
But two?
Two and 15.
And 15 called special by Mr. Holden. Miss Grohl wants item six special.
Six and, yes.
Any other specials?
Yeah.
Any other specials? Seeing none.
Three special.
Okay, 23, 24, and item number three are called special. Item six is called special. 21 and 14 have been continued. Item 15 is also called special. Item two called special. Anyone else? Mr. Bernson asked last day of action for the council, item number 14.
Although the agenda says July 19th, that's an error, so the August 6th date, the is well within the time, actually, it's August 16th is the last day for council action.
Okay, that answers Mr. Bernson's question. Ms. Misakowski.
Continue item four, at the request of the City Attorney. That's acceptable, Chair.
Request to continue item number four.
Until which date?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, that would be August 2nd. Without objection, so ordered. Ms. Perry.
I'd like to request that item 15 be continued, as there's no fiscal impact analysis on the side of yet, so I'd like to have it continued.
Mr. Holden had desired item number 15 to be called special. Mr. Holden, Ms. Perry wishes to continue item 15. Do you concur, or do you wish to call it special? Okay, well, let's continue it, and we'll certainly have a hearing when it's re-agendized. Ms. Perry?
Ms. Perry.
Continued for how long? 30 days, that would be September 3rd. Item 15 then, without objection, shall be continued. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Mr. President, items numbers 25 through 38 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I do have cards on items 25, 27, 31, and 37. Let's call those special.
Mr. President, items numbers 26 through 29, it has been advised by the department that the hearing date is required to be changed to September 11th. A motion is required from the floor to allow that.
Is there such a motion? Ms. Misakowski moves. Is there an objection to that? Seeing none, that shall be the order. On the balance of the items, members, I do not have speaker cards, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed, and without objection, consider these matters before us today. Members wishing to call any other specials? Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, item 37 was a receive and file, so I'm not sure who called that special.
It's, we have a comment card on item 37.
Well, okay, I, okay.
Okay.
There's no other way of withdrawing it, other than receiving and file, right?
Yes, but because it's before us, and public hearings haven't been held, we will hear from a member of the public. Any other specials, members? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 39 on the regular agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Members wishing to call 39 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 39. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
You have gone through the regular agenda, only special items are now before you.
Okay, let us return then to presentations. Chair recognizes next, Mr. Garcetti.
Will you please give a welcoming hand to the recent graduates of Council District Whenever we meet in a room like this, whenever we have a community meeting, I think the question that we ask is not who is in the room, but who is not in the room. I think when we look at leadership and we look at the responsibility that we have as elected officials, it's not which voices do we hear every single day, but which voices have we never heard from? As you know, my office is committed to and has a team of four people, community organizers, committed to building capacity inside our own communities, reaching out and recognizing new leaders, helping to give them the tools and the understanding of how the city works, and how politics and organizing around issues that matter to them works as well. So it gives me great pride to be able to present to you the most recent class of graduates from our Organizing Academy. Each one of these individuals who lives in communities in and around the 13th District, be they from Glassell Park, or Elysian Valley, or Echo Park, Silver Lake, Hollywood, East Hollywood, Temple Beverly, these communities are places where we have not always done a good job at reaching out and touching people where they live, and yet the individuals who live in these communities have the same concerns that we all do, for safer communities, better communities, make sure that resources come to their streets, to their blocks, to their families, and making sure that we all share a vision for a brighter neighborhood, but also a brighter city. This recent group was able to pack what usually happens over a series of nights into one single day, and I'd like to thank the Episcopal Archdiocese for opening up the cathedral alongside Echo Park Lake, and my staff who worked very hard to bring this group of individuals together, Ana Guerrero, who's my organizing director, Fabiola Vilches, who's here today and helped with this presentation, who's my senior organizer, and also George Villanueva, and Heather Repinning. I also want to thank Andrea Escavell, who helped put this together as well for today. This group of individuals learned the basics about community organizing, and about also articulating what it is that their communities want, and how to build a constituency so long after we're gone, in my office, they will have that ability within their own neighborhoods to advocate and to organize for the things that matter to them. And that's how you change a community, by making sure that leadership isn't here in this horseshoe, but that leadership is out there where this horseshoe radiates towards in this city. So I hope that you will, why don't you hold your applause until the end, but I want to congratulate each and every one of you for completing the academy. You are each going to be shining beacons in your own community. Muchisimas gracias por su participación en esta academia, and I want to also challenge each one of you that this is not the end of it. I think many of you know that this is just the first step, and we look forward to seeing you in the future as perhaps commissioners for this city, as leaders in different issues coming to here, whether it be housing, or parks, or schools. I challenge you to make sure that this is not the last time you come to City Hall, but the first of many. So first, I will just read one certificate, and then I will hand these out. It says, "In recognition of your efforts and commitment to your neighborhood, by completing the Council District 13's grassroots leadership and organizing academy, congratulations. Your commitment demonstrates the depth of your passion for developing yourself as a conscientious leader who strives to create social and economic equity in the city of Los Angeles. I am proud to honor you on this day." En español, en el conocimiento de sus esfuerzos y compromiso a su vencedario al completar la academia del liderazgo y organización de base del Distrito Trece. Su compromiso demuestra la intensidad de su pasión por desarrollarse como un líder consciente que se esfuerza por crear igualidad económica y social en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Es un honor para mí poder reconocer sus esfuerzos en este día." From myself and my entire office. So first, Gabriela Olano. Henry Delgado. Guillermo Arzola. Jose Antonio Furlán. Levardo García. Laura García. Joaquín Serrato. Rosa Serrato. Andrea Garavito, who is also an intern with our office, a great upcoming young leader from Elysian Valley area. Luisa Padilla Mavropolis. And the other Mavropolis, Mr. William Mavropolis. And the one-named wonder from Glassell Park, Bradley. Okay, go ahead. We'll hear a quick word.
On behalf of all of us in the Echo Park, Silver Lake, Elysian Valley area, we thank you, Councilman Garcetti and your staff, for the opportunity that you have given us. You've opened up the doors to us. You have shown us that we too can come here and do and represent our community the way that you, we have chosen and elected you to do the same. Thank you very much, because you do not know what this means to our community. Thank you very, very much.
I would like to thank Mr. Eric Garcetti for giving me the opportunity, and for me being a representative for my community, Elysian Valley, and also to let you guys know that I'm just 16 years old, and I am a leader for my community, and I would like to thank him for giving me the opportunity, and I know that I am going to be a role model to all the youth of the nation, the community, and of the state of California, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
As you know, we here in the city of Los Angeles are blessed with many talented individuals and many talented groups putting forward different efforts to highlight the great contribution to the various communities in the city of Los Angeles. And it's with great pleasure that I invite up here, who's with me, Edward James Olmos. As you know, he has worked very diligently in his acting career, has done many films, there's so many that we'd be here all day if I listed them, but let me just tell you that he was the originator of the zoot suit, and the play version, and in the film also, and in the film. And the reason I raise that is because we are also celebrating the 25th, is it 25 years? 25th anniversary of the zoot suit?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. And it's coming back to the Ali Theater Center on Spring Street, and so I want to highlight the fact that he was the original lead actor, as is Pachuco. And I also want to tell you that we've seen his work in The Battle of Gregorio Cortez, Stand and Deliver. Recently, I saw him and caught him in the film called In the Time of the Butterflies with Salma Hayek, which highlight the tragic killings of the Mirabal sisters in the Dominican Republic, and so we all know that Edward James Olmos has a long and very productive and successful acting career. But more importantly, he has been an activist, an advocate for the community in the city of Los Angeles, and one of his projects, colleagues, that he co-founded was the Los Angeles Latino International Film Festival, which kicks off tonight at the Egyptian Theater. We have the opening tonight at 7:00 p.m., and I have booklets, and I made copies of all the films that are coming to the film festival for all of you, and so if anyone wants a booklet, I have them for you. But we're here to honor his great work in the international, the Latino International Film Festival of Los Angeles. As you know, the city of Los Angeles is one of its main sponsors. It was born in 1996, that would make this year the sixth year. It's currently led by Marlene Durmer, an experienced independent producer with vast knowledge of Latino film and programming. George Hernandez is also a part of the team, independent film and music producer. The International
Muchisimas gracias por estar aquí en este momento. Este festival es para ustedes totalmente. Es la primera vez que hemos tenido la oportunidad de traer esta clase de evento para ustedes. Y les quiero decir que este momento le quiero dar las gracias a la ciudad de Los Angeles porque sin ellos no podíamos existir. I'd just like to thank all of you that are Spanish impaired, and tell you that the future looks bright. Looks a lot brighter today than it did six years ago before this festival was mounted. Film is obviously a very, very wonderful medium that transports us into people's lives, into their psychology, into their customs, into their values, as well as into their fears and into their exploitative goals, whatever that may be. But they also serve as a way for us to understand a tremendous amount about each other. And I got to say this, this festival, God willing, we can stop doing this festival one of these years. That's the big goal of the Latino Film Festival, is not to have the need to do a Latino Film Festival, to do an African-American Film Festival, or to do an Asian Festival, or an indigenous Festival. The sadness is that we have to do this continuously, and it took us six years for us to be able to do it here. And I got to tell you this right now, because of the city of Los Angeles, and their support from the very conception, you helped us from the very beginning. We have grown to be the largest Latino international film festival in the world, and you deserve to know that. This is a very strong, strong community. There's a lot of Latinos living here, and more than that, there are a lot of people who really appreciate the different cultures and the different situations that one can learn from film. It attacks the subconscious mind. It's the single most powerful medium in the world, bar none. And I thank you, and especially, I thank you for my children and my children's children, for giving them the opportunity, because this festival not only feeds the adult, it feeds the child. We bring thousands of students to watch film in Portuguese or in Spanish with English subtitles, so they have to read, very innovative concept in filmmaking, to read as you're watching a film. But that's what happens with this festival, and I really thank you very much for making it possible for us to exist, and your commitment to making this the festival that it has become. Between you, Blockbuster, Ejeva, the 20th Century Fox Home Entertainment, and Next Time Motorola, you are the presenting sponsors of this event. And you were the very first presenting sponsors of this event, and you have made it what it is today. So, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for the work that you've done to make it possible for us to exist, and I hope that you will be attending at least one of the films, and you will be pleasantly surprised to know that they make quality films outside of the United States of America. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Olmos. Before you leave, did you have several members who wish to, have several members who wish to say a few words?
Mr. President, before he leaves, also, Mr. Garcetti is now free from the earlier presentation. Let me bring up Councilmember Garcetti also.
To be followed by Councilmember Rudy Thomas, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Miskowski, and Councilmember Grue. I will be brief. It's a real honor to have the film festival back again and to be able to have what is such a hallmark. I was able to go to the opening last year, and when you see the quality of films and the connection that this festival allows the community to have with the broader Latino community, Latin American community, the Spanish-speaking world, it does a service which has been long absent and one that is a real jewel for this city. I want to congratulate Mr. Olmos for all the work that he has put in, and I want to thank the council members who I spoke to personally about making sure that we could get some buses to help youth come to this film festival as well, which is so critical that for so many of the young people in this city who don't get to see movies in general, not only to be able to go to movies, but to be able to see them in a broader context and see their own heritage reflected on the silver screens. Thank you for doing that, and thank you to the council members who helped bring those kids as well. So, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Rudy Thomas.
How do you have to stand here and let everyone say nice things about you?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I rise to acknowledge the presence of this premier advocate for the best of what Los Angeles can be. And while he arrives today on the occasion of what might be seen as an ethnic-specific way of making Los Angeles more culturally rich, it ought to be appreciated by all of us that this luminary in our city has done more to help us transcend the specifics of ethnicity than practically any one individual in our city that I can think of. Without prompting just by the movement of his own sense of what is right, urged by that which is in the best interests of the whole, Mr. Olmos has, on occasion after occasion, without ceremony, tried to help the city become the best city that it possibly could become. The festival is just one way of illustrating that through the prism of Latino heritage that potentially illuminates the experience of other ethnicities, and I see this as one more expression of what will help Los Angeles be what all of us hope it would be. And for that, I think we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to you for your continued advocacy and leadership. Thank you, and Godspeed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rudy Thomas. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. In my years of being a public servant, I've had the opportunity to witness Mr. Olmos not only be the icon of the zoot suit, but also to watch him appear before students at a hunger strike at UCLA when critical issues of access and our abilities for people of color to enter higher education. He was one of the anchors in that movement. I saw it again when he was working with the leaf blowers in the hunger strike. I'm from the city lawn, and we were dealing with the issues of how do we treat our workers, how we treat our labor force, again, issues of humanity, issues of employment, significant issues in the Latino community. And the arts is but another aspect of that advocacy. So, I just wanted to say thank you in public, share this with the rest of those who are watching and listening to these proceedings, to know how much you've given to our community and our ability to show who we are on film. Just recently, I read about this report where CBS, I think, got a D for not allowing diversity in their presentation in their network. NBC didn't do too well either, neither did ABC. So, obviously, we have a long way to go, and I just want to thank you for all the great work that you've done for everyone in this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me just echo those sentiments and say thank you to you that I think above all, what is recognized not only around here today, but around the city, is your stand, your commitment, the purity and your integrity for those causes that you believe in. And those causes are always at root. For the multicultural in this city, you say that, you speak that, and you are listened to. I think, time and again, the city has come to you and asked, would you sign a ballot argument, in something advocating for children, advocating for police and public safety, advocating for our city? And I know that you have never hesitated but to say yes. And it is that integrity, that fundamental passion, that I think resonates with us here and with citizens throughout the city. So, I thank you for being there and for the purity of that passion and integrity.
Thank you.
Ms. Grue.
Good morning. We had a pleasure working together when I worked for Tom Bradley and with Henry Cisneros, and recently, when I was at DreamWorks, and supporting the Latino Film Festival and all that you have done for the community and the homeless, which you came out recently to the rally and walk we had here. And so, we don't often get to say thank you as much as we would like to, and I just wanted to add to the voices you've heard today about your leadership and to continue, and hope that you'll remind us always about how we can be a better council and work with you to improve some of the things that we find are extraordinarily problematic and challenges in our neighborhoods. So, just want to add my voice and say thank you to all that you do.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Character, leadership, reputation, a love for Los Angeles, all of Los Angeles, I know when our city has gone through crisis, you've been there to quell. I know after September 11th, you were at some events, I attended those events, you were there to quell, to bring people together. Your compassion for the people, not only Latinos, but all people, and all of Los Angeles, in which you have done without fanfare, has just been part of who and what you are. Your movie career, what you've gained in that, and what you've spread to Los Angeles is recognized by thousands and thousands of people. And I don't know if you remember, we shared a table recently at our Cesar Chavez Dinner in downtown Los Angeles, hundreds of people for that event, and having conversation with you and what you are all about, and reflecting today and hearing my colleagues, the comments. You are a man who has principles, belief, leadership character, in what Los Angeles is made of, those people of inspiration, people identify with and want to look towards, how can we make it better? And I remember on Vermont Avenue after September 11th, there was an event, and you were there, and you were helping quell some of the hostility, quell some of the anger, quell some of the frustration. And it doesn't matter what happens when it's bad, but Edward James Olmos is there to make it good. I do appreciate, along with the people of Los Angeles, and may God bless you and have you continue with what you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward J. Olmos. It's great to see someone from Los Angeles who is in the business, who really loves Los Angeles and participates in Los Angeles when it rains and shines. And you do that, you're former honorary fire chief for the city of Los Angeles. We were together years ago at your station out at 88th one day, and I know Janice Hahn and I were talking about you just a few moments ago, and I'm just proud of what you've always done, but proud about this film festival, because as you said, it's internationally known. You could walk in a village somewhere in Europe, or in South America, or in Asia, and there'll be some film there that people are being attracted to, to tell a story, and that is universal. So, I'm just pleased that you're having such a great gala, and if you get out early, make sure you go over to Musso's Franks and sit in Sergio's table and have a nice after-the-theater dinner. Congratulations on your film festival, and thank you, Nick, for bringing in Eddie, for all you do for Los Angeles.
God bless you. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the work that you do, and of course, you're a tremendous actor, a very eloquent, great community advocate, but the thing that I think that you bring to all of us is the way to teach is through simple acts of kindness. And a memory that I have of you after the civil unrest in 1992 was of cleaning the streets, no fanfare, no publicity, you just went down there and did it, and I think that's the greatest lesson of all, and the gift that you have to share with everyone, and that does transcend ethnicity, geography, socioeconomic status, it's just about caring for each other. So, thank you, and thank you for bringing the film festival to our attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I just want to recognize not only the fine actor that you are and the work you've done on this festival, but I want to add that he's been an advocate and a spokesperson for people that didn't have a voice or were not heard, sometimes when it wasn't so popular with all of us, but he had the courage to speak out at those times. So, I want to congratulate you for the work you've done and for the work you've done in the past. Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
I just want to join with my colleagues. All the things they said about you are true and should be said, because you are a good person. You spoke from your heart when you said, hopefully, the time will come when we won't have to speak of Spanish Film Festival, African American, or any other ethnic group, just the film festival. That's a goal to be achieved. That means that that cuts through all ethnic groups, persuasion, whatever, however they think. You think about mankind, personkin, I don't want to get in trouble, but you think about people, and they're all the same, not only in the eyes of God, but in yours, obviously. And we see you as that kind of a person, at least I do, and you're a good person, and we all know it. As one guy said, what else can you say about a person other than they're just really a good person, and you are such. We'll always admire you, friend.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Thank you very much.
Two things, I know he would never say this, so I will say it, and don't forget, he's on American Family right now on PBS, a great, great program. And for Hal Burnson, he's another Bald Heights kid, okay, so just, you know, so you put that down your list, all right?
Let me just say thank you to all of you again for the kindness that you've expressed here and the love that you share with the city by serving the community. You all deserve our respect and our thanks a thousand times over. This is not an easy job, and I must tell you this, I don't know how it started, but God willing, we'll see the end of it. There's never been such a thing as a African race. There's never been such a thing as a Caucasian race, or a Latino race, or an Asian race, or an indigenous race. We know that, but we still purport to use that word "race" as a cultural determinant. There's only one race, and that's the human race, period. Inside of that race, there are beautiful cultures, and those cultures deserve to be understood by all. So, I say thank you very much for this kindness and this respect, and I guarantee you that this festival is just beginning. There will be a time when this festival will actually become the centerpiece of Los Angeles throughout the world. God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Labange. And Mr. Weiss.
All right, guys. Hey, Steve, how are you? Okay.
And for Hal Burnson, he's another Bald Heights kid, okay? So just, you know, so you put that down on your list, all right?
Let me just say thank you to all of you again for the kindness that you've expressed here and the love that you share with the city by serving the community. You all deserve our respect and our thanks a thousand times over. This is not an easy job. And I must tell you this, I don't know how it started, but God willing, we'll see the end of it. There's never been such a thing as a African race. There's never been such a thing as a Caucasian race, or a Latino race, or an Asian race, or an indigenous race. We know that. But we still purport to use that word "race" as a cultural determinant. There's only one race, and that's the human race, period. Inside of that race, there are beautiful cultures, and those cultures deserve to be understood by all. So I say thank you very much for this kindness and this respect, and I guarantee you that this festival is just beginning. There will be a time when this festival will actually become the centerpiece of Los Angeles throughout the world. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Labange. And Mr. Weiss.
All right, guys. Hey, Steve, how are you? Okay. Just got the show on the road. Morning, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm here with Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Labange to recognize some very special people who live primarily on the border between my district and Mr. Labange's district. And here's the deal. If you suffer a heart attack, a serious injury, or a serious medical condition in the La Brea, Fairfax Highland part of town, you can call Hatzola. And within 90 seconds, a trained, qualified, emergency medical technician, a volunteer person from the Hatzola organization is likely to be on the scene and will be in a position to provide you with emergency medical care that can, and in many instances will, save a life until the LA Fire Department and their paramedics arrive. Hatzola and the leaders of Hatzola are behind me today. Here with me today are Shamu Barukmane, Kaim Kaladny, Rabbi Teichman, Zvika Brenner, Shumaya Mandelbaum, and Stanley Trittel, and Howard Winkler, and there are many others as well. Hatzola has created this extraordinary response capability in this part of town that ought to serve as a model for communities in all of Los Angeles. Let me emphasize, it is all volunteer. Let me emphasize, every member of Hatzola receives the best training that a civilian can receive. In each of their cars, they have an extraordinary array of medical devices, and I would butcher it, so I'm going to ask Vee to come up in a moment and tell you what they have in their cars, but included in their cars are very expensive devices such as those defibrillators that you now see throughout buildings. They are in a position to provide emergency treatment to all sorts of injuries, traumatic injuries. Vee told me once about someone who fell through a plate glass window, they're able to stop the bleeding. They can do an enormous number of medical procedures until the paramedics arrive and help save lives. They are on call 24 hours a day. They have dedicated radio transmitters, which they all carry on their person everywhere. There are repeaters on the buildings in the Fairfax part of town so that their dispatchers, who are also volunteers, can contact whoever's on duty and summon help. In short, they have, they've made a tremendous difference and they provide a tremendous example to all of us who are trying to find ways for our communities to come together and provide emergency services, emergency care in those precious minutes between when a 911 call is made and when the paramedics finally arrive. And you don't have to be Jewish to call Hatzola. All you have to be is in the area and have the Hatzola number, which is provided to businesses and residents throughout their zone of coverage. Anybody, day or night, 24/7, in my district and in Tom Labange's district can call Hatzola, and they will receive help from Hatzola until the paramedics arrive. So, Mr. Labange and I are here today to provide this plaque to the leadership of Hatzola Los Angeles for everything they've done for their community. Vee?
Ladies and gentlemen, a big round of applause for their civic involvement.
We're going to take a picture in a minute, Ron. Hold on a second, we want to get this squared away, but this is the uniqueness of Los Angeles as we just had Edward James Olmos here and talk, and now Hatzola's here. And if you live in Beverly, Fairfax, Councilmember Garcetti's very familiar with this too. This volunteer organization is made up of people who care about everybody. And they work closely with our Los Angeles Fire Department to make sure that they don't overstep any area that one should step in coordinating this effort. But they're there to care for everyone in the community, which is great, which we'd love to see foster throughout. And before we have everybody speak, I would like to have Chief Arbuthnot, if we could speak. He is the commander of Battalion 18, running out of Fire Station 61 in the City of Los Angeles. And for all of you to know that 28 years ago, he was my first employee when I started with the City of Los Angeles. He was 14, I was 18, he was a youth worker, and I was a youth worker. Now we're both youth workers, working for our youth. Chief Arbuthnot, please tell us the Fire Department's story here. Thank you.
Before you proceed, Chief, ladies and gentlemen, it's moving to a level of being difficult to hear those who are making presentation and receiving those presentations. So sergeants, those who are not able to be as attentive as is reasonable, would you ask them just to conduct their business in the back so that we can hear these very special presentations? Right here, sir? Right here. Please proceed, Chief.
Mr. President, honorable counsel, again, I'm Darrell Arbuthnot from Battalion 18. I cover the Woolshire area where the Hatzola group is very active. And it's nice to state that this is an organization that actually is a seamless effort between the community and that Fire Department. Hatzola's been very effective, and we've got a number of incidents where they've actually provided a service prior to our arrival. However, we still stress 911 is the first to call, and then they make their call to Hatzola. Also, I'd like to also mention that they're kind of an augmented tool in the case of large-scale emergencies, earthquake or other incidents such as those where we can actually count on them to be self-independent and still provide that service. So, again, I'd like to, I'm here appreciating for the honor, the presentation for the Hatzola organization. Thank you.
We also have Chief Manning from Division 2 here, welcome him, and also Engine 61, which is the hotbed of the air. They're getting a big applause there from Hatzola. I got to ask Councilmember Garcetti, who is, uses the word seamless so well, but this is it here.
Thank you. It's great to be able to join today in honoring this organization and the work that they do. Shows you how far volunteers can go into our community. And also, when we talk at time about decentralizing government, how much of that has to come up from the community, not just top-down from us here. You, by being a partner of coming up forward to us, really shows us what the model can be also. And between the Latino Film Festival and this, both my mother and father are very happy today.
We appreciate the personal insight, Mr. Garcetti.
When I can hear from Zvika Brenner, he's going to tell us a little more about his group.
Thank you so much, sir.
With the permission of Rabbi Teichman, Mr. President, honorable council members, dear guests, and fellow volunteers. On behalf of Hatzola, I'd like to thank the Los Angeles City Council for taking this initiative and honoring Hatzola with this noble recognition, and especially Councilmember Jack Weiss and Councilmember Tom Labange. This recognition is a tap on the back for Hatzola, and needless to say, that it could only serve as a tremendous encouragement for Hatzola as a group and each individual of its volunteers to continue and pursue its mission. Furthermore, in my opinion, I think that this recognition is first and foremost an expression of trust, an expression of faith. When somebody takes upon himself to handle somebody, someone else's life, one cannot expect less than 100% performance. In order to perfect itself, Hatzola continues to further develop its relationship with other city and county agencies in order to increase coordination and cooperation, and consequently, to facilitate a smooth and seamless transfer of patient care in an emergency situation. I'd like to take this opportunity, as we stand here, to thank the individuals and agencies that have helped us over the last two years to get to the point where we are today. First and foremost, of course, City Council members, Jack Weiss and Tom Labange, and the good services of Councilwoman Cindy Smitskowski's office, especially Adina Tesler. Councilmembers are really concerned about our operations, and they are really concerned about our needs. I remember when we were sitting one evening and discussing our operation with Councilmember Jack Weiss. He was really disturbed by the fact that when we respond to an emergency such as a child choking or a second-degree burn, when we end up serving the patient, we get back to our cars, there's a parking citation on our vehicles. And as I understand, as we speak, Councilmember Jack Weiss is busy trying to alleviate those citation when they occur. Other than that, I'd like to thank, other than that, I'd like to thank Mr. Ellis Stanley from EPD. When Mr. Stanley heard about our organizations, he only felt that it will be natural to incorporate Hatzola as part of the emergency preparedness program for the City of LA. Thank you, Ellis. I would like, I cannot leave this podium without thanking the people of the Los Angeles Police Fire Department. Frody and Sleep. Especially the people of Division 2 and Battalion 18. I would like to thank personally to the individuals that have helped us so far, they've been very cooperative with us, they facilitate for Hatzola volunteers to ride along with their local paramedics, regardless what time of the day, what time of the night it was. They were very informative and telling and being constructively criticized of our protocol, and we have learned quite a bit of them. Truly, I feel that we are lucky in our community to have such people serving us, such those firefighters and paramedic at Station 61. We have a representative, Captain Karen here.
Thank you very much.
And I truly feel that these people are an asset to our community and to the City of Los Angeles as a whole. I would also like to thank people from the county, Chief Maruni from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, and we have the Los Angeles County Commissioner Howard Winkler and Stanley Trittel, who really helped us greatly in putting us together with the proper agencies and the proper personnel in the city to help us get to where we are now. Again, I'd like to thank, I would like to thank you all for taking this initiative and honoring us with this extremely noble expression of human compassion. And remember, we always believed that a volunteer could make a tremendous difference in a person's life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to all go in the back room for a great group shot. Shalom to Hatzola.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Weiss. The chair now recognizes Ms. Perry for a presentation.
Come on, come on. Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to honor a very dear friend, a dear lady, a dedicated volunteer, and a woman with spirit. This is Eva Placencio. She's a resident of the 9th Council District and lives in Angeles Plaza. This year Eva was among 93 seniors who were recognized for their dedicated community service by the Los Angeles County Commission on Aging. This award was given to someone who truly deserves it. She gives her time as a volunteer for the Congress of California Seniors, St. Barnabas Nutrition Program, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, the Angeles Plaza Latin American Club, Our Lady of the Los Angeles Cathedral, and the International Institute of Los Angeles. And that's just the shortlist. She also serves as the chairperson of the Los Angeles Community Police Advisory Board for the Central Area. Because of Eva's leadership and the group's efforts, the fear factor among seniors and incidence of crime in and around Angeles Plaza has been greatly reduced. I wanted to have her come to City Council today so that I could thank her and that all of you could recognize her for all of what she does for our community and our city. Her energy and her spirit is inexhaustible. She brings love and compassion to everything she does, touching the lives of those she reaches every day. So Eva, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the 9th Council District, I want to say thank you and congratulations.
Mr. President, at council person's, I want to thank each and every one of you on behalf of all the seniors, all the seniors, I mean, besides my constituents in Angeles Plaza. I'm here to say that I am very, very, very happy and appreciative of everything that you have provided for our City of Los Angeles. I love LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. The chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Good morning. It's a great Friday when we can acknowledge all the good people that make our city that much better. But today I have the privilege of recognizing a group that essentially is in line with the fact that the World AIDS Community has just adjourned the annual International AIDS Conference in Barcelona, Spain, and the Wall Las Amorillas Project worked to produce their first public service announcement for their outreach program, Latino Men's Group. The Wall Las Amorillas was founded in 1993 to empower the Latino community to take an active role in constructing a memorial to people who have died because of AIDS. In addition, the project was founded to create culturally sensitive education about HIV and the AIDS issue. The Wall Las Amorillas Project sought the talent by placing an advertisement in Backstage West Actors trade newspaper. About 40 actors submitted resumes and photos to the organization. Auditions were held for 20 participants and eventually four were chosen. The script was written by the staff of Las Amorillas. The public service announcement was performed in both English and Spanish for 30 and 45-second spots. The actors contributed more, about 20 hours to the filming of the PSA. Members of the council, for those of us who have worked with nonprofit organizations over the years, we all know how limited their resources are, and we also know that quite often nonprofits such as the wall, a PSA is not a line item in their respective budgets because they are so costly. Oftentimes, it takes a special organization or a special company to step up and say, yes, this is important, and yes, we are going to help to make a difference. To shoot a high-quality spot, Immersive Entertainment offered to film, direct, and edit the video spot for the Las Amorillas Project. The crew spent over 12 hours of taping on that day, about 15 more hours of editing. The representatives of the Immersive Entertainment Company, who donated so much of their time, who are with us today, is Art Churabala, who is a director. Art, may I offer this sort of appreciation to you?
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Isaac Ku, Director of Photography. Lawrence Nelson, Creative Director. Tim D. Towery, Principal Controller. And Juan Garcia. And Juan Garcia. The actors for this PSA were Christian Leal and Gary Alonso. Others that have participated but are not here are Mark David, Jeff Collins, Mark Torres, Mario Cortez, Carlos Campos, and Norman Mora. You should also know that Hollywood Rentals donated the equipment for the production and have donated numerous times in the past to tell to the wall Las Memorias production. And representing their organization is Brett Weeks. You know, we work with many nonprofits, and you wonder why is Councilman Reyes actually highlighting this? And we look at the fact that we have three million six hundred ninety-four, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand folks in the city of Los Angeles, and the Latino community makes up one point seven million of that population. We look at the fact that right now we have eleven thousand cases that we are aware of that are suffering from AIDS. And there's a larger number out there when you look at many of the persons who are infected who live this macho world and actually go home and are infecting family members. There are many women who are suffering too. And so when we look at the city of L.A., which is an international city, which is composed of large immigrant communities, how we educate, how we culturally sensitize those folks who are falling victims to this disease because of the lack of information, because of the lack of understanding, and especially the women who suffer, those populations are only getting bigger. And we need to inform people of what's happening. We need to do it multilingual, multicultural, and it's a very large number. So it was very important for me to be to share this and to highlight the private companies, the folks who donated, to get this message out there. We need to address this, and it can't be any more urgent as it is today. So I'd like to ask Richard Sullivan, would you like to step up to the mic as the Director of Las Memorias?
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President, members of the council, I just don't want to take much of your time. I just want to say how important this really is, that it doesn't matter how much money we put into HIV/AIDS prevention, all the money in the world is not going to stop the epidemic. It's really going to take a family, a community, a country to stop the epidemic. And I just want to call to the mic a few people just to say a few words. I thank you for this and thank you for the certificates and all your support, but here's some, from some of the actors and from Art, from Immersive Entertainment. Art?
Hi, good morning. This has been a very educational and enlightening opportunity for us at Immersive Entertainment. We were very impressed to learn about the humanitarian, social, and health services the Wall Las Memorias provides to the community, and we are very proud to have had the opportunity to work with the organization in its efforts to educate and raise awareness to the community about HIV/AIDS prevention. Immersive Entertainment would like to congratulate the Wall Las Memorias, together with the assistance of government, the community, religious organizations, and corporate sponsors, on the construction of a monument for people to observe, remember, and commemorate the thousands of people that we've been, that have been lost to AIDS. Now, this memorial is a triumph because it symbolizes the healing process, the promotion of health, the erasure of discrimination and homophobia associated with HIV/AIDS. Again, we are very honored to have had the opportunity to work with the Wall Las Memorias and the Latino Men's Group. Let me just flip the page. And we hope that we can continue to work with the community in strengthening our commitment towards social issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Art. Also, from the young actors, they're not just struggling actors, they're working actors, and you can interpret that however you may, but they're professional actors. And I'd like to call up to the mic Christian Leal.
I would like to thank the Wall Las Memorias Project for giving me the opportunity to participate and contribute to my community. I think it's a very good thing they're doing, and I am very confident that this PSA will help many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Gary Alonso.
Hi, I'm delighted and excited to be a part of this project. Latinos are one of the fastest-growing groups of people with AIDS. I was born into a Mexican-American family, a very strict family. There were certain subjects you did not speak of in my house. I had, I have an uncle who you never talked about. I have cousins who the family pushed off into the periphery. And it's because of this silence that our brothers, cousins, father's sons are being infected with this deadly disease. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to break our cultural silence. The time for this project is well overdue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Richard. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Ms. Gruel. Oh, and as Ms. Gruel takes the podium, Mr. Holden has an introduction.
Mr. President, members, I just want to introduce some teenagers from my district, so I'm sure they're going to be wanting to leave, from the Tom Bradley Family Youth Center, the DG Kids and Teens. It's a summer enrichment program for youth between the age of nineteen, nine and sixteen. July twenty-nine through August twenty-third, they have a program there at the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center. They're being escorted today, as President, by Karen Wade. Let's have them stand and give them a nice round of applause and hope they'll come back to City Hall again.
Connie. Phil. Lydia. Paula. Becky. Come on. I am so pleased to be here today, and if I could ask Jarrett Comfort and his family, and his wife Linda, and his dad George, and Bonnie, and Stephanie Joyce, his three sisters, they wouldn't mind coming up. Can your dad come in? Many people in this, this city hall, in this building, and all over the city know Officer Jarrett Comfort. I met him, it's hard to believe, but twenty years ago, when I was just intern in Mayor Bradley's office. And I have to tell you, he scared the bejesus out of me at the time because he was the person outside the mayor's door, and if you tried to even go close, he'd give you the evil eye. But he's talked about retiring over the years, and we never thought it actually would happen. But as of last week, he has retired from the police department. And many of us know Jarrett from his time working with Mayor Bradley. But he has been a police officer thirty-five years. He served in the very elite Metro Unit, worked in the Vice Unit, as well as the SWAT Team. He was well-respected and still is for his dedication to Los Angeles. I asked my friends to come up here, many from the Bradley family, which is a large group of people who stayed together over the years, really believing in so much that Tom Bradley did. And so I am, I am pleased to have a resolution here today. He probably never thought I'd actually be a councilmember to present this. You had to wait to retire till I became a councilmember, right? So he could present it. But want to acknowledge his wife Linda as well, who has, who, they met in the mayor's office a long time ago. How many years ago? Twenty-eight years ago. But Jarrett, yeah, but who's counting, right? Jarrett Comfort worked night and day with Mayor Bradley. Those of you that know Tom Bradley, he left his house early in the morning, went to events till close to midnight, and then it was a seven-day-a-week job. And we were always sad in some ways that we actually had to have someone who protects our mayor. And that was the first time that we actually had police officers when there were threats against Tom Bradley's life early in his career, that we would have to have this. But Jarrett protected the mayor, protected all of us, and was really an extraordinary person here in the city of Los Angeles. So I'm pleased to be able to stand here with his friends and family, and so many people who support him, and I'm gonna, sorry to see him go. We're just gonna get you to do some other things with your free time, Jarrett. But again, want to acknowledge his father, George Comfort, and his three sisters who are here, Bonnie, Stephanie, and Joyce, who have been, I know, a major part of his, his life. So I'm pleased to be able to present, I did say Linda, because Linda, we might ask you to say a few words, Linda, because you can tell us some real stories about Jarrett Comfort, as does, I think Cindy Misakowski wanted to tell a few stories, she told me, so I'm gonna be the nice one today. But I'm pleased to, I know there's some of my colleagues that want to speak, but pleased to present this resolution, which has lots of words on it, but it particularly just says that "We want to recognize his over thirty-five years of outstanding performance of duty, during which time he exemplified the highest traditions of the Los Angeles Police Department. And we extend best wishes and good health during his well-earned retirement." And I know Tom LeBarge wants to say a few words because he played baseball with him, but just, he is going to be sorely missed, and as a friend, someone who gave us humor many times during the years in the mayor's office, and also made sure that we were safe and the mayor was. So I'd like you to all just join me in giving Officer Jarrett Comfort a round of applause and congratulate him in his retirement. Do you want to go ahead and, while they will present this?
Mr. President, members of council, thirty-five years is great service to the city of Los Angeles, and as Councilmember Gruel spoke of, in the great tradition of the Los Angeles Police Department. When Jerry worked for the mayor's office, I was working for John, and Jerry was with Tom Bradley absolutely all the time throughout the city, and as Tom Bradley worked, as Wendy said, from morning through night, you were all over the city, and Jerry was always so helpful. But then also, he was a member of the great city haulers, which was a great baseball team. And he was a fabulous left fielder who could hit the ball, drive it long. Dad, you'd be proud of that. Drive the ball long, but he was a great outfielder, and Cindy Misakowski was a great pitcher. So I just want to say there was talent on all sides, very great talent. But I'm just pleased to join with Councilmember Gruel and all the members of the council, Ron Butcher, our city photographer. Give Ron Butcher, he never gets a hand. He takes all the pictures. He's a good friend to Jerry. The Police Commission is here this morning. We want to recognize all the staff of the commission, where you worked for the last nine, ten years, and all the work there. Phil DePoyen and Connie, and everybody from the mayor's staff, you have mayor Bradley's staff, you have a great tradition, Lydia, I know, and everybody, but a great tradition, Paula of the alumni. So it's so important that you be recognized and honored. This great, beautiful commendation that Becky had made special for you with this custom Comfort Blue. Not everybody gets this custom, custom Comfort Blue, but also a small plaque with the great seal of the city of Los Angeles that you could hang. And I'm honored because Wendy was a staffer for Mayor Bradley, and I was a staffer for John, and a right fielder. He was left fielder. We didn't need a center fielder because Jerry was so fast, he could cover center too. But congratulations to you on your years of service. I'm very proud of you because you truly were a great Los Angeles police officer who served this city well.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's a sad day when you retire, but a happy day for your family. They don't have to worry anymore about what happens when you go to work and if you're going to come home or not. And I know the many days that I was at LAPD, and we crossed paths many, many times during those years, always accessible, always responsive, always there as a team player. And I know your years with Metro, you wouldn't have become the mayor's driver and security aide if you didn't perform well in Metropolitan Division. So it's a tribute to you, to your family. Some people say that police marriages don't last. Well, you're reflective of, police marriage, marriages do last a long time. Your wife's put up with you for all those years with what you have to go through. And I know the later years, you were working for the Police Commission, and when I went over there to get things from the Police Commission, you were always very responsive and very helpful. But your professionalism, your dedication, I look at your dad, and I'm sure your dad is so proud today. You know, the day you're born, the day you retire from a police department after serving so many years, faithful, dedicated service to the people of the city of Los Angeles, you have left with pride, with dignity, with respect. It's to fill that gap, that huge gap, that you leave, that experience, that dedication, the perseverance, what you have done over your career, we cannot thank you enough. God bless you, keep you healthy in your years ahead. Enjoy those pension checks because God knows, you earned them. And your wife, go out and spend those pension checks because you earned them putting up with them. Thank you very much, Jarrett. Thank you for your years of service. God bless you.
Miss Misakowski.
I think like many people standing there, when I first met Jerry, it was with Tom Bradley, and he reminded me of a Secret Service agent. Ramrod straight, nothing was going to get by, nothing was going to happen. You knew that, that, that the life of the mayor was in his hands and it was well taken care of. Then I got to know him, as Tom said, as part of the city family, many of the people standing there, Phil, Tom, Greg Nelson, Rob Wright, the city haulers, and that is part of what we are here. We are a family, and I don't know where Jerry ever had the time to be playing baseball with us, but he did. And then after that, after his service to the mayor, he went and provided that same service, that same protection, and that's why we have so many people here today from the Police Commission, because you were the Police Commission officer. And although things might have been rough for the mayor, I dare say some of the meetings that you took care of in the Police Commission may have been just as volatile. So thank you for that, thank you for, there are some people here who you just never expect to leave because they are just part of this institution. You recognize them, they are always here, always doing the best job, and so it's really with sadness that we see you leave, but it's well, well-deserved, and I wish you and Linda the best of happiness.
Thank you all very much. I, I really appreciate it. Thirty-five years is a long time in police work, but it is one of the most challenging and rewarding jobs that are offered these days. I owe a lot to my family. They're the ones that formed the background to make you the kind of person that you are. And I've always tried to do police work the way that my dad taught me. You know, treat individuals as humans, be good to folks, make public safety an important issue, and take care of the community. And I've kind of lived by that, and I appreciate his backing and the backing of my family and friends. I really appreciate working for this city. It was a great thirty-five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
We are going to make an announcement here. We have some more students. It's one thing about the city hall chambers, the arms are always wide open for our young youth to come to visit with us and to hear, listen, and learn about how government works for them and for our entire community. And these students have been very patient, and so have Mr. Walker, but I'm going to sit there for two more minutes. And we're going to invite the students and parents and teachers from the Cornerstone Academy Daycare Center, a visiting city hall today. Please recognize them. They have a certificate they want to present to, to you. Ben, how are you doing? Good to see you.
This is for you.
For me? Oh, okay. I'll just turn it around like this.
Oh, yes, right. It was turning up.
All right.
We made that for you.
Read it for me.
Okay.
You know what it's going to say?
All right, I'll tell you what it says. I'd like to present this to our Councilman Holden. I'm Maxine McGinnis from the Tenth District, and I am the program director at Cornerstone. And this says, "Thank you, Councilman Nate Holden, for your support of children and education throughout the years. The Council District Ten Administration has been an asset to our business since our inception. And for that, Cornerstone, the children, and families we serve, and our sponsors are forever grateful." Thank you, Nate. Thanks for meeting. Thanks for meeting.
Thank you.
All right. We made that just for you.
Take a look at that, huh?
Yeah. Thank you, Nate. Now, we wanna take the children?
We will. Ms. McGinnis happened to be one of the active members most in my district, in my block club, and her daughter works for the city attorney's office, and she's doing some of that neighborhood prosecuting for the city of Los Angeles, so it's one family that's really involved. As President Members, we've been waiting for some time, but this is a class act. We have with us Mr. Walt Walker. Mr. Walker is a painter of extraordinary talent, with a prolific career that has produced more African-American art images than anyone in the country. All right, come on, just sit there for a while, and we're ready to present it to you, and we want you to stand up. Whereas Mr. Walker, original art paintings have been published as prints in several formats. This legendary octogenarian continues to be a source of inspiration for the entire artistic community in Los Angeles. Whereas Mr. Walker, who was born and raised in Detroit, and learned his intricacies of this craft at various institutions, including Detroit Museum of Art and the Metropolitan College of Los Angeles, whereas he settled in the city of Los Angeles in nineteen forty-eight, and quickly discovered the absence of an exhibit location for African-American artists. And this motivated him to open a gallery in Limerick Park, in Mr. Thomas's district of the city of Los Angeles, and it's called the Lejean Gallery. Whereas over the years, Mr. Walker supplemented his income by working as a commercial artist for stores and restaurants, and even painting logos at Jack Kent Cooke's Great Western Forum for ice hockey, basketball, and boxing. Whereas anyone who ate at Ray's Kitchen from the late sixties into the eighties was able to meet him, watch him work, and appreciate the paintings he had on display, been around. Whereas he gives this sage advice to young artists, seasoned artists, and artists yet to come. None can be perfect, but we all can aim at perfection. When we aim high enough, we reach a quality in our work that we can be proud of, says Mr. Walker. Advice can be a lesson to all of us. Therefore, Mr. President, be resolved by the adoption of this resolution. The City Council, the City of Los Angeles hereby honor Walter Walker, Walt Walker, as an outstanding artist and painter and historian, whose work will be appreciated for generations to come. And he's joined here, Mr. President, by the owners of the FDG Gallery, Mr. and Mrs. Humphries. And I want them all to stand and come forward, and as they're coming forward, I'm going to announce that the FDG Gallery will probably present a special exhibition, salute to artist Walt Walker, in his last California gallery exhibition, on July twentieth through August fourteenth. The reception will be held tomorrow, Saturday the twentieth, four to six p.m., refreshments, hors d'oeuvres, and all the food that I can eat or provide, at four to four seven zero West Adams Boulevard, Los Angeles, two blocks west of Crenshaw Boulevard on Adams. And the telephone number, if you wanna make reservation, is three two three seven three seven four nine eight five. And I got that plug in for you. So come on up here, and let's make this presentation. Mr. Mark Lee Thomas, whose district in which he lived and started his craft when he came to Los Angeles, Mr. Walker, did sign this resolution.
Give him a hand, won't you?
You know, I want to apologize for struggling like I did, but I fell down in the doctor's office. Can you imagine that?
In the doctor's office?
And they stood around there giggling, and but nobody helped. Yeah. So, but I'm done, all right. I like to tell the story that that's true, that it happened, and you can see why I think the way I think. Now, when I came in nineteen forty-eight, mess of the artists meet each other, so a group of us would go on La Cienega, which was the headquarters for art. We would go in and out of the gallery, and it was very nice, you get a chance to talk to the artists, have a cup of coffee or something, and it was very nice. But one night, I walked out, and I said, "I'm disappointed." And the two fellows, they whispered, "What are you disappointed about?" I said, "Have we seen the black eyes?" "No." "Have you seen the black work of art?" "No." I said, "When I lived in Detroit, I used to do my neighbors, and, you know, dope heads, or whoever was water poles, I'd do all those pictures." So I started doing the pictures, the people thought I was a nut to stay there and paint pictures, they wouldn't sell. Pretty soon, people began to buy, and all of the artists that laughed at me came over and wanted me to hang their work. So I did that. Now, it must have worked all right, because I've been married for sixty-two years. And I think that's something kinda different, and my wife created a slogan that we're using now, "Married sixty-two years and still speaking." Now, we were being ignored out at Venice Gallery, Venice, because of, the people walk past, and they look, and they keep walking, look, keep walking, and very few would ever really come over and talk. But when she put that sign up there, they stopped, and they talked, they become friendly. I got photographs sent from Germany and Russia that they took with me, so it worked. So whatever I did, I think I made the right decision. Thank you.
All right. No worries.
I would just like to say that Walt and I have had a wonderful life. We have four sons, eleven grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. So we've worked together in this community, and I hope we can continue to do it, and you all will come out and support the arts, because they're in bad shape, believe me. They need you to come and buy something from an artist, whether it's Walt or me, but just get out and buy some art from the black community, the Mexican community, because they're suffering. They need your help. Thank you.
Mr. President, and fellow council members, Councilman Holden, again, we're here, we were here early in May to recognize that Latino artist, Frank Martinez, and it is Dr. Walt Walker. And Walt Walker, many of you have seen the Laker Forum floor, the former Inglewood Forum floor, and the work that Walt done, the Laker logo, that we all enjoyed so much, this is the artist that painted. He painted on ice for the Ice Capades, he owned the first black gallery in Los Angeles, he has taught many students in the L.A. Unified School District by going out and speaking in community centers, and it is a privilege, and you're looking at a living legacy. And at age eighty-four, he says it's time to stop. He is tired. And we recognize Walt as one of the premier artists, and today, you can still read about this artist, and it's a pleasure to even meet this artist, because he is a living legacy. And we wanna thank Councilman Holden and all of his staff for the many years of support that they have given us, and the support they continue to give. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, I'm joined by Ellis Stanley. Let's hear it for Ellis Stanley. He's making his second appearance this morning. What we have is the Emergency Air Response Unit, and people wonder, what is the Emergency Air Response Unit? Well, people like Angelenos oftentimes find there are crisis strikes, could be an earthquake, could be a flood, could be some other disaster. And the city has limited resources. While we have a wonderful police department and fire department, let me give a plug for my wonderful police officer son, Christopher Zine, that goes out in Pacific Division every day, protects the people. Oftentimes, we need additional assistance. The Emergency Air Response Unit was formed by the Emergency Preparedness Department's General Manager, Mr. Ellis Stanley. Get over here, Ellis, stand next to me, man, stand on my right. I don't want you to behind me. Go protect me. Ellis Stanley formed this in response to the city's needs for additional resources when its conventional resources are expended in time of emergencies. There are twenty-five volunteer pilots who fly their own aircraft for the City of Los Angeles in times of emergency. The unit is responsible for assisting the various city departments which comprise the Emergency Operations Center. We use the pilots to airlift medical supplies, food, clothing, and other resources around the city where vehicular travel is either impossible or too slow. They transport additional manpower to areas where it's needed, transport emergency personnel from the city into the city from outlined communities when roads and freeways are impassable, and we saw that during the devastating Northridge earthquake. Assistant search and rescue missions provide airborne reconnaissance, providing damage assessments directly to the EOC versus their radio, and they go through ongoing training. At any time, a minimum of ten pilots are available to be called up, that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Each pilot has a minimum of one thousand hours in the air, each pilot is instrument rated, they've all completed background investigations, so we know they are honorable, responsible members of our community. We have both fixed wing and helicopter pilots. The unit commander is Jonathan Ames, who has more than five thousand hours in the air, he's a former L.A. paramedic, and maintains his medical credentials, Jonathan Ames. The deputy commander is a practicing medical doctor at Northridge Hospital. One captain is retired airline captain with more than twenty-five thousand air hours. One air captain is a retired Air Force police officer. Another is a flight software design engineer at JPL NASA. Another is a helicopter pilot and reporter for KNX Radio. All are accomplished individuals with impeccable records, both professionally and in service to the community. The unit will be activated by and operated under the direction of the City of Los Angeles Department of Emergency Preparedness, and that's what Ellis Stanley is responsible for, the innovation, the volunteerism, and this does not cost the taxpayers one dime. The services are free, they pay for the gasoline, the air fuel, whatever it takes to do the mission under the direction, and what Ellis and his crew do is join the city forces in the disaster, when and if a disaster strikes. I wanna commend all these people, I have a resolution for the Emergency Operations Unit Partners in Preparedness Program, and this after September eleventh is obviously very, very important to the City of Los Angeles, to our city workers, and to the taxpayers, to know that the City of Los Angeles has the resources, the volunteers available, to handle any catastrophe, any disaster, any situation that may occur within the city boundaries. So we are one city with a proud reputation of protecting and serving, and this is another example of volunteerism at its finest, when people can bring their airplanes, their helicopters, and not charge the city anything for those services, that is planning, well-done planning by Ellis Stanley, the general manager of that wonderful department. So I'm gonna have Ellis say a few words, Jonathan say a few words, and then we can introduce some of the pilots that we have today. The rest of them are working as the all-working professionals. Thank you, Ellis Stanley.
Mr. President, and members of the council, and especially Mr. Zine, this community is rich in resources, as you saw that this morning with Hatzila, and now with these gentlemen that have committed to be part of our preparedness effort in this community. This city has a lot of great talent, and it's up to us to find out how we best can use it, and we see an opportunity to use this in emergencies, and any time that there is a need for that type of assistance. This group actually came out of a national group called Angel Flight, whose sole mission was to move people from around the country, from hospital to hospital, if there was a need to get things done. And this is a dual-use effort, now they are a resource for this community during disasters. And I thank you for recognizing them, and I thank them for volunteering and participating in this great effort. Thank you.
And we bring forward Jonathan Ames, the man who brought this together for us. Jonathan?
Members of the City Council, and certainly Mr. Padilla, Mr. President, it's nice to see you again. As you know, about three years ago, you and I talked about this, and a lot of other projects that are starting to come to fruition now, so I wanted to thank you for your leadership in the City Council. I'm gonna be brief, because you have the city's business to conduct, but I did wanna do one thing, I did wanna use your news media right now, Channel thirty-five, to all the people that are out there looking and listening. This happens to be a dedicated group of pilots, we're good at what we do, we have experience in what we do, and we came together under Ellis Stanley and Dennis, and the City of Los Angeles to accomplish a mission for the City of Los Angeles in times of need. There are others out there with their own special abilities, that also can contact the City of Los Angeles and offer their support, and their services, and their particular jobs. I like to encourage them to do that. After nine eleven, it's become very, very obvious that very quickly, city's resources can be outstripped, and it falls to us, members of the public, to do something about that. Again, I'll be brief, Mr. President, thank you very much, members of the City Council, thank you very much. And Mr. Zine would like me to introduce the pilots, so I'm gonna let them come up and introduce themselves, and be very brief. Thank you. First is my deputy commander, Dr. Stuart Bloom.
Good morning, sir, and ladies. I'd like to just thank you for the opportunity to support our unit, which I think can provide a great deal of support to the city in its time of need. We encourage people who have skills that we can use to join us, and we thank you again.
Members of the council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate in this activity. My name is Steve Watson. It's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and my name's Carson Lockett with Blue Skies Aviation at Van Nuys Airport.
And I'm Dave Kirkendall. I hope you never have to use our services.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Erv Moskowitz, I've flown a hundred and fifty missions for Angel Flight so far, and I'm looking forward to helping out in this city in other endeavors. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, all, my name's Jeff Dilly, and thank you for the privilege of being here, and I look forward to serving the community and all you very well, and thanks a lot again.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Coolidge. I had the privilege of serving my country for twenty-two years, flying in the United States Air Force, and I really appreciate the opportunity to continue this service. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Zine?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. LeBonde?
Mr. President, members, I just wanna thank all of you, and Ellis, thank you for the creative way of putting together that great resources. You said it, this is a community that's talent-rich for people, given the opportunity to volunteer your special skills and needs, and let's hope we never need you, as one of your members spoke, but when we do need you, we know you're there, you're very special, you're true angels in the City of Angels. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman LeBonde. And I just wanna compliment Ellis Stanley, and also the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles, who voted a bond measure recently to enhance our Emergency Operations Center, and when a crisis occurs in the city, elected officials are all notified, we respond to the EOC, we help coordinate activities with all our city departments, and the facility really has outdated itself, and thank God to the taxpayers of Los Angeles, the bond measure passed, and that's gonna be enhanced. to be enhanced to provide us with the state-of-the-art emergency ability to provide service to the City of Los Angeles. And with this compliment, it just adds to the ability that we have to serve the people of Los Angeles in the time of any unusual incident. So, Ellis, thank you, and I thank the members of your team for putting this together and your proactive approach. We all recognize, and thank you very much for that.
And I have one little presentation. They say the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. We have with us Mr. Rockwell Rocky Ames. Rockwell, if you'll please come up here. Jonathan Ames is the son of Rockwell Ames, and on this day of recognition, I don't think Rockwell knew what was going on. Well, I'm glad we surprised you. You have been, and this is for you, this resolution, and let me read a bit about you. Rockwell Rocky Ames began his service to the citizens of Los Angeles as a field deputy to Councilman James Potter in 1963. Faithfully served in that capacity, distinguishing himself not only as a field deputy, but a special advisor, and finally, director of special projects. Rock served the citizens of Los Angeles through the office of the Mayor, Sam Yordi. Served the citizens of this great city under the Mayor Yordi as press secretary, deputy mayor, director of urban development for eight years until 1973. Distinguished himself by developing and directing a number of projects which directly benefited the city and its citizens, including laying much of the groundwork for the '84 Olympics. Embarked on a distinguished 12-year public service career with the County of Los Angeles under Supervisor Kenneth Hahn. After retiring from the county, Rockwell returned to the City of Los Angeles in 1990 as a member of the Housing Commission, voted the City of Los Angeles Housing Commission's president in 1996, and re-elected every year thereafter. Rocky continues to serve the City of Los Angeles with dignity, honor, and selfish devotion. These accomplishments and dedicated service to the City of Los Angeles are recognized, and your son, Jonathan, thought it would be appropriate day, since we're recognizing what his people are doing with the emergency preparedness, that we also recognize and thank you for your years of dedicated service, not only to the City of Los Angeles, but the County of Los Angeles. And your history here goes back before probably Councilman Bernson, Councilmember Holden. I mean, we talk about a councilman by the name of Potter, and I think we'll find that back in the early '60s. So, 19 what? 1971. Our new historian, Sidney Buzekowski. Where's Tom Lebon for the history of Los Angeles? But, no, don't invite him.
Leave him alone. Let him rest.
Let him rest, okay. So, he was here today, knowing that his son and the pilots were going to be recognized, not knowing we're going to recognize with a resolution. So, I wondered why you have that astonished look on your face. Normally, people know we're going to give them some recognition. So, I want to give you the microphone for a few words. You're used to speaking as a press deputy and currently on the Housing Commission, so you definitely love Los Angeles. We appreciate all the work you've done, and we're acknowledging that today. Here you go, Rocky.
I've never been at a loss for words, as some of you may remember. Mr. President, members of the council, I spent a lot of hours in this room, counting votes, mostly holding on to votes. I'm sure you all understand what that means. I thank not only you, but I thank the City of Los Angeles for a time of my life that was most enjoyable. I looked forward to coming to work. I never knew what was going to be on my plate that day, but I enjoyed working with all of the people, most of whom are either passed on or retired to Swatamankal City. I haven't quite gotten to that point yet, but I had my 78th birthday last Sunday. And I must say that, looking at the new group, many of you were doing a lot more youthful things when I first joined the city. Some of you, I don't think, were with us yet. I wish I could tell you how much fun it was. It was a different time. It was a time when things could be done. The city was not faced with the almost insurmountable problems that you people are faced with now. And we had the beginnings of revenue sharing. I've had some words that I've said here in the council to some of the council members when I appeared before them, that are probably part of the tape record that I'm very proud of, but I won't repeat them now. I don't want to throw down memory lane with you, but this place has a lot of memories that are great. There are a lot of ghosts in this room right now. Standing right behind President Padilla is my old and dear friend, John Farrell. We go back to when he was a state appraiser for then, Secretary of State, I believe, was Alan Cranston, or Controller, I believe. The three of us were very close. I often watch your show on television, and it must be wonderful to know that you're going to be renewed next year. That doesn't happen very frequently in television, as you know. I've heard things said that I responded to on tele, to the television set, things I would have liked to have said here. They all are unimportant at this point. The important thing is that you've embarked, many of you, for the first time on a part of your life that you will remember, I hope, with as much good feeling as I have for my time here in the city and in the county. But let me tell you something about the comparison. The county is no great chase compared to the city. This is my kind of town, as Frank Sinatra said, and it will always be deep in my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rudy Thomas?
No matter what that gentleman says, I doubt that he can convince any of us other than his son that he's 78 years old. What do you say?
Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to warn everybody upfront. I have two presentations. First, I'd like to invite to the microphone the Free Artists Creative Equestrians. If we brought the horses, we probably could have gone first. And we're really sorry we didn't think to bring the horses. We got everybody here? You got the coach?
I'm here.
There you are. Okay. Because I'm going to ask you to say a couple of words. Members of the council, the Free Artists Creative Equestrians, whom you see behind me, are a competitive team. They will be representing the United States at the World Equestrian Games in Spain in September. And the organization not only teaches them just to ride a horse, they do a lot more than that. They do vaulting, which is acrobatics on horseback, which means the horse keeps moving while you jump up in the air, and then when you come down, you've got to be in the same place as the horse. It's an interesting experience. So, we are very proud of this team because they are, first of all, young people from throughout Los Angeles County. We overlook the fact that the organization's based in Moore Park because they take care of our kids as well. And horseback riding, as you know, is not something that everybody in the city gets to do, but if you have the opportunity, it's a great experience. And to be representing our country in Spain is an even better experience. And they didn't do that just by luck. They did that by a lot of hard work and training. So, I asked them to come in today so that we could wish them good luck in the games in September. And I have certificates here. I'm going to read the names of the team members, and then we'll go in the back and do the certificates. We do fancy photographs back there. But wave when I say your name. And then I'm going to ask the coach, Devon Maitoso, to say a couple of words. Did I get that wrong?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Team members Blake Dahlgren, Shannon Poore, Sterling Weatherly, Trish. Raise your hand. Trisha, because I can't see if you're raising your hand, if you're behind me here. Can you see yourself on that screen? Yeah, okay. You can wiggle if you need to do that. Where were we? Tricia Thompson, Rachel Torres, Leah Smith, Adrian Matsumoto, Jacqueline Atkins, Bethany Haas, and Angel, or Angel, Omar Hart. Angel or Angel? Okay. Now, let me just ask, now, here's what we have for you guys. This is Devon's, as the coach, so you can hang on to that. And then I have one of those for each of you, but I would like you, if you would, to say just a little bit about the organization and what you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galanter. This is quite an opportunity for us, quite an amazing honor to be here. On the behalf of the team, I'd like to say how proud we are to represent America and LA. We're a very diverse group of youth athletes, and they've been working very hard this year, for actually more than just one year. Some of them have been vaulting, been training for 13 years. Some have been doing it for about a year. Very, very hard-working group of kids, and I'm proud to be their coach. And they're going to serve our country very, very well, I'm sure. We're working very hard this summer. We're going to practice just after this, actually.
Oh, good. So, we'll let you out of here.
Yes. This is very important for us in our pursuits to be recognized as a sport. It's not the most commonly-known sport in America, and so this is one step of the way to becoming more recognized. So, this is quite an opportunity. It's also a very diverse, economically diverse group of athletes. We're trying to raise the funds to make this possible, and this will help us hopefully along the way. So, thank you very, very much.
You know, one of the reasons it's not the most common sport is that the equipment has to be fed. How about giving these guys a hand and wish them well when they represent our country in Spain? Now, if you guys will just step aside for a second while I do one more, but don't leave That's right, in the valley, we can have an equestrian games. We'll work on that, Hal. I do have one other presentation. Yeah, I'll be back there in a second. Where are my dry cleaners? My wet cleaners? Members of the council, I know you've all heard of the dry cleaners. You probably make stops there once a week or so, but we now have before us today a wet cleaner. And a wet cleaner, get used to this, this is the wave of the future. It is my very great pleasure to present yet another Good Earth Keeping Certificate to our first dry cleaner in LA who has switched from dry cleaning, which uses a lot of nasty chemicals, which I can never quite pronounce, tri-chloroethylene something, is that right? Per-chloroethylene. See, I always get it wrong. So, I want first to recognize the Delmar Cleaners for, who's going to be for the Delmar Cleaners, for your courage in being the first to transfer over to this new process, which is environmentally okay. It doesn't have nasty chemicals in it. It cleans your clothes, it does all the things you think of dry cleaning doing, only it does it without the gunk. And so, I want to first of all, present that to you. We have actually three people who've made this possible. But the Delmar Cleaners is the real investment and the real commitment by a small business, a woman-owned small business, let us note, to be the leader. And she was helped in putting this together by the Pollution Prevention Education and Research Center, which is a project of, God, these are very long names, a project of the Urban Environmental and Environmental Policy Institute at Occidental College, which my good friend Bob Gottlieb, who is actually the guy who lured me to California, so for those of you who hate me, talk to him. The Pollution Prevention Education and Research Center helps small businesses and other people understand how to make switches in the way we do business so that we can protect our environment instead of destroying it. And they have given grants to eight dry cleaners who are becoming, one has become, and the others are in the process, of switching to wet cleaning. You need the grants because you have to invest in different equipment. And so, Bob, somewhere I have one for you.
Thank you.
And then, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, whom you've all heard of, who do many things to regulate, and they frequently find themselves in the position of telling companies things they can't do. But in this case, they have done what I'm sure is much more satisfying for them. They have provided the funding for a project that helps to actually improve the environment. And so, somebody here from AQMD. So, I would like to congratulate all of you, and these are the, this month's Good Earth Keeping Awards, for doing something that is helping us to clean up the earth and to keep the earth safe to live on. So, congratulations to all of you, and if anyone's still listening, would you mind giving them a hand? We will, but before we, in addition to that, there are others who are listening and want to comment as well. So, let me call on first Councilmember Bernson.
Yes, members of the council, Madam President, on behalf of the governing board of the South Coast Air Quality Management District, I'd like to recognize Delmar Cleaners for their decision to utilize the 12,500 AQMD grant to convert their cleaner to pollution-free professional wet cleaning technology. I understand the owners and the operators are happy with the performance of this technology, and I would urge other dry cleaners to learn about this technology and convert to help clean the air and reduce the workers' exposure to toxic percheloethylene. I can't even pronounce it, but whatever it is, it can't be too good, right? So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. The chair also recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations. I am well-familiar from my days at Occidental with Bob as well, about the project throughout the city, and I think it really takes a big leap of faith, but I want to congratulate Delmar Cleaners for doing that. Until we have access in every community for people to be able to use this technology, I think we shouldn't rest, and I hope the City of Los Angeles will continue to be a good partner. And thank you to Councilmember Galanter for recognizing today your efforts.
Can I just add one thing? I'm going to ask, we've agreed, we're going to have one spokesperson up here, we're going to have, Bob's going to do the talking. How did I guess? But I think while you're at it, we might want to give the address of your dry cleaners so that Ms. Morales can make some money off of this, because this switch in technology will work only if people like all of us patronize the cleaners that switch from dry cleaning to wet cleaning. And you may have to look a little harder for them for the next year or two, but if this catches on and they are successful in their businesses, then we will be in a position to have this all over the city. So, Ms. Morales, I want to first of all, congratulate you, and then Bob, I guess I'm going to let you have the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Galanter. You know, there are 400 dry cleaners in the City of Los Angeles. Each one of you councilmembers have dry cleaners in your district. This is an issue that's a community issue, a very profound community issue, and one of the things to think about in this conversion is it's an enormous environmental benefit, but it's an enormous economic benefit. This conversion, it will be less expensive than running a system that uses a toxic chemical. It will, the operations will be less, of course, the environmental benefits are clear. We're finding out that the energy use is less, so there are energy benefits. And the pioneer work that Delmar Cleaners is doing is something that when cleaners and community people, and I would also suggest you as councilmembers and your staff actually see the system operating, a conversion takes place, because it not only works, but it works wonderfully, as one of the slogans of wet cleaning says, "The whites are whiter and it smells differently." I would invite you actually to come next Friday. There is a demonstration that Delmar Cleaners is having at 701 Washington Boulevard, and it's to demonstrate how the system works and how we can make this process change. And so that every council district will have several converted cleaners in the next couple of years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 701 Washington Boulevard in, that's got to be Venice. Uh-oh, I knew it. I did it, you do it. Go ahead.
I also want to really thank AQMD for taking the lead and being supportive of this transformation that's taking place. They are an agency that's, I think, deeply committed for making these kinds of changes how it take place.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Thank you. All right. Members, that does conclude the presentations for today. We had a huge array of citizens and community groups doing good things throughout the city, but now it's time to get down to our day of business. Mr. Clerk?
Item number two called Special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. Holden?
Madam President, I'm sure we're going to need a report on this, and they're coming forward as we speak, talk about this spot pricing, natural gas, and when is it available and when is it good for us to buy it? And why we, this formula is being recommended as such. You guys going to take to the table?
Can we have a presentation on this matter?
Yeah, please. Peaks and valleys and what does it really represent in terms of cost savings, et cetera?
Maybe I can begin here. My name is Bob Rzansky. I'm the department's Assistant Chief Financial Officer. Basically, what you have before you is a proposed ordinance that would amend the Los Angeles Administrative Code and would delegate to the board and general manager of the department the ability to enter into financial and physical natural gas contracts for a period of up to five years. Many of you know the department's electric retail rates have been frozen for several years since April of 1998. And approximately a year ago, natural gas prices, which typically ranged in the $2.50 to $3.50 per million BTU, skyrocketed up to a price, I think we paid as much as $59 per million BTU in December of 2000. And we were fortunate at the time because we had robust surplus sales of energy that offset the cost of the natural gas price increase. Our budget for that particular year for natural gas was 136 million. And the actual cost came in closer to 411 million, which is almost 200 percent higher than what we had budgeted. And going forward, we do not believe that it would be prudent for us to rely on having robust surplus energy sales in the future to offset potential spikes in the price of natural gas, especially as we become more reliant on our Los Angeles Basin gas-fired generation facilities. And so what the ordinance provides is for the department to be able to purchase a insurance, essentially, a price cap, such that, just like in a standard mortgage, if you have either a fixed or a variable rate mortgage, I think for those of you that do have a variable rate mortgage, you know every year there's an annual cap. The interest rate generally can't exceed an increase of 1% or 2%. And then maybe over a five-year period or six-year period, or over the life of the particular loan, it can't exceed 5% or 6% above the initial start rate. So that's a price cap. The second thing that we can do is to buy what they call a collar. And what that allows you to do is to keep the price of natural gas within a specified range. And the final thing would be to enter into a fixed-price arrangement where we can fix the price of natural gas for a period of up to five years. The ordinance has a number of controls that are embedded in it, such as the only time that we can use or enter into these types of contracts would be for our retail customer load only. In other words, we cannot use this particular ordinance to enter into contracts, financial transactions, on behalf of wholesale customers. In addition to that, the price cannot exceed $7.50 per million BTU. Now, that particular price happens to be extremely high. That was established, that's about what we thought the budget could handle under the frozen rate condition that we have today. But right now, prices are in the $3 to $4 range, depending on what time period you're looking at. Currently around 3. If you go out a year or two, it goes up to maybe 350, and so on and so forth. In addition to that, we're limited to spending a maximum of $15 million each fiscal year to purchase the insurance and not have any more than 75 million over a five-year period. I think one of the final controls would be that there would be an independent, there would be a committee that's established within the department that consists of five top executives at the department to provide oversight and recommend strategies for hedging our natural gas exposure. And all of the activities pursuant to this ordinance would be subject to an annual audit by a third party with reporting requirements to the city council, as well as our board and mayor's office. We have our financial advisor, the department's financial advisor, has been involved in helping us develop our strategy. We have also had a third party come in and evaluate our strategy. And these folks believe that what we're doing is prudent and is a good idea. The final thing I'd like to say is we aren't really blazing trails here. The department is not blazing trails. As a matter of fact, we're probably a little behind others. That other utilities, such as Sacramento Municipal Utility District, Glendale Power and Light Pasadena, the Bonneville Power Authority, New York Power Authority, the California Department of Water Resources, all have similar strategies. And these entities have already executed on their strategy. The rating agencies that rate our bonds, some of you may know that we've been trying to get an upgrade on our electric or our power system bonds. And recently, a report was issued by Standard and Poor's. And we did have a couple of meetings earlier this year with them. And one of their concerns was what we are doing to ensure that our financial margins are maintained in the event natural gas prices spike. And so we did brief them on what our strategy was. And they believe this is important going forward in terms of evaluating whether or not the department's bond should be upgraded.
Thank you. Mr. Holden?
Madam President, Mr. Deaton, don't you want to comment on this, number one? Number two, the state went into the spot purchasing of natural gas, I believe, and they're spending billions of dollars. They got really hung out there to dry. Explain the difference, please. And Mr. Deaton, will you respond to the recommendations being made by Department of Water and Power?
Essentially, we've purchased, over the years, we've purchased our natural gas on a spot basis. That means that whatever the market price is, either on a day-ahead basis or in real time, that means the day of, when you need to generate electricity, you take whatever the market price is. And the price of gas just fluctuates on a daily basis. And we have one longer-term contract, but that particular contract also floats based on an index price. So what this allows us to do is to buy insurance and/or lock in some portion of our natural gas requirements for retail customers going forward. So that if in the event natural gas prices were to spike again, we would not be in a situation where we would have to unfreeze our retail electric rates and in fact raise them like what happened in the Pacific Northwest a couple of years ago. They were not able to absorb, they didn't have excess generation capacity, were not able to absorb the cost of that natural gas, and they had to raise their retail rates. So we're trying to keep that from happening. In addition to that, since we now, another key goal of the department is to maintain the city transfer going forward. And as you know, the city transfer was recently raised from 5% of gross operating revenues to 7%. And as part of that, it's constrained by net income. So to the extent that natural gas prices were to spike, we didn't have insurance and we didn't have excess power sales to offset the cost increase, then we could find ourselves in a situation where the city transfer is constrained.
Mr. Deaton, you may want to respond as well, but I would just like to alert the members of the council that we now have only 11 members present. We do have business yet to conduct today, so I would request that no one leave without getting excused. And let's see if we can move on through the agenda. But, Mr. Deaton, do you want to respond? Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members of the council, we've been working with the department for the past several months on this ordinance. And we believe it provides a level of insurance against the kind of spikes in the gas market that we experienced in the last several years. And actually provides for a much better way of purchasing gas and preventing the possibility on the spot market of being gouged for high prices. And I think this allows the department the ability to better manage the purchase of natural gas. And I wholeheartedly support the ordinance.
Great. Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members, I think it's a good idea what we're doing here today. The state of California have shown us, if we didn't learn already, that the spot market is not the way to go. We had a guy named Freeman, used to work for us, who went up Sacramento, since he's an expert. And he taught them how to buy gas and other fuel that's needed. And showed us how to sell it to the communities around the state of California. He bought it high and it never went low. And they have to pay, that was their cap. Is that right?
Yeah, they, for the most part, fixed out the price at a very high level.
Fixed out the price. But what I don't understand is that we were buying about $60 also BTU. And why did the CLA let us do that? I mean, if the spot market was something that we couldn't control, we should have bought in low when it was low. And then rather than buying on a daily basis when it's high, and then have to pass on those prices to our customers. But we were saved by the fact that the energy prices were high at the time. We were able to offset the loss that we realized in buying natural gas with the energies, with the profit we were making on transfer lines, power transfer lines, and also selling out fuel from Mojave.
I'm quite aware, Mr. Mojave. Mr. Holden, the only time that we really got shafted on the spot market was when the state of California wanted power. And the only place they could get power is from us. We had to go on the spot market in order to buy gas. Then they complained that we were gouging them afterwards, even though we had to go on the spot market. A little editorial comment.
No, no. But if you're going to complete the editorial, Mr. Deaton, you also say that when they sold Mojave and another plant in Utah, Montana, I believe, we were using that energy, and I'm going to sit down, Madam President, using that energy to offset, to compensate our users and keep the prices low. But when you sold Mojave under the guise of, one, building clean plants in the seat of Los Angeles using natural gas, you're saying consumption of natural gas went up. Therefore, we were providing that for our own users here in the seat of Los Angeles where we wanted to burn clean fuel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So when you're voting for these things, you've got to keep them all in mind, keep them together, Mr. Deaton. You sold Mojave, you sold a plant in Montana. We lost that energy, okay, outside of the state of California. You're being recommended to do that, and they all voted for it who were here then, except Mr. Deaton warned against it. I voted against it, and I think one other person may be here perhaps. But that's a mistake. So we've got to look at the whole picture. Not just what you're doing here today, but what we did in the past and what it cost us. I mean, you exceeded your budget by how much money on natural gas?
Approximately 200 million.
200 million? And when we sold Mojave, we didn't get that. You see, we bought it back for 90 million, half of what we were going to sell it for. So in one year, you blew the 200 million based on the recommendation of the manager of Department of Water and Power at the time. And I just happen to remember that, and that's what term limits is going to do, is take that information away from us. But I think we're in good hands, and at least I hope we are. Keep them on their toes, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
All right. There's no one else to request to speak. We have the committee report and ordinance before us. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. The report is approved, and the ordinance will go over for one week. Next item?
Item number three, called special, and as much as there is an amending motion.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, you have before you 3A was essentially an extension of the negotiations to accommodate the work that the chief legislative analyst, as well as the committee and the council as a whole, has to do to complete the work that's required on the negotiations that are currently underway to make sure that all of this is in compliance and consistent with the, consistent with the overall objectives we wish to accomplish. This essentially accomplishes a two-week extension. And we intend to bring this motion or action back through committee next week. And the following week will be on the council agenda. And I move approval and unanimous vote of the same.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
It says something about if we don't approve this ordinance by July 29, that the abdication shall be deemed denied without prejudice. You hold my time while we speak to that issue, Mr. Deaton?
Basically, that's the, the ordinance has been sent from the commission to the council. What this motion does is make that July 29th, August 12th, there is a letter from AT&amp;T for extension. And so we will continue the ordinance until it comes back to council. And we will, so we're on the same footing. What happened was that although we don't agree with AT&amp;T on this issue, they agreed to continue it to the 29th. We don't think, we believe it doesn't terminate the 29th. But in order to not have a problem, we've been pushing it through the process. This continues it till August 12th. There's a letter on the file from AT&amp;T to the same effect. This puts us in a whole position, gives us a little more time to take a look at what the commission did and what the issues are, and allows us time to come back to council with a good recommendation. And it doesn't change our position at all. And we recommend approval of the motion.
Just a couple questions. When did AT&amp;T and Comcast merge? When did they merge, you know?
I'm not sure. Some of this, my, you need to talk to the attorney, but I don't think the merger hasn't happened and, yeah, hasn't happened. That's what's before us.
Nationwide, has it happened or just?
Nationwide, I don't think it's happened. And I think some of these transfers are somewhat related to that issue.
Okay, then my next question is that we went from media ones, AT&amp;T, not AT&amp;T Comcast. And my question is, are they solvent? I mean, what is the dispute? What is the hangup? Why we having problems negotiating it? Do they have any real problems that we have to be concerned about, like later on, like some of these other WinFirst and others?
Well, I think that each issue, each franchise has to be looked at on its own. This has to do with transferring of the ownership.
I know that.
And I don't think the solvency issue is an issue. I think we...
No, AT&amp;T is all right now. Comcast may not be, I don't know. It's one bad blood or not. Ma'am, you standing over there, will you come over and help Mr. Deaton out?
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Madam...
Yes, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
As Chair of the committee, Mr. Holden, just a brief intervention as Chair of the committee. This is precisely why we ask for the two-week time for the council to be able to look at these matters with care. That's the extent of what's before us. The answer to that cannot be definitively given by the council at this point. And because we felt that it was important to get to that, we are choosing to move beyond the date that's before us.
Point's well made. We knew this was coming before the council and enough time for it to have been dealt with. And if we're going to hold for two weeks, it should go back to committee?
That's what we said.
That's what the motion is.
Right, go back to committee. But do you want to comment on this as we send it back to committee?
Very briefly, Liza Lowry, ITA, there are a number of concerns that have been outlined in the report to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners that have been forwarded to the council. Those concerns are being addressed through conditions that are in the proposed ordinance.
It's going to committee.
It's going to committee. Put it onto the motion.
There's nothing, there's no harm created by this to life.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I am glad it's going back to committee. And of course, I know we're all concerned with these kinds of mergers. And ultimately, I just want to make sure that we are first and foremost considering the customers, that they're being protected during this merger. I think that's probably what we're most going to hear about from our constituents is some concern... some concern over the level of service. Will certain people that they know, will they still continue to have their jobs? Will the levels of complaints be addressed in a better manner or a worse manner? So I just want to make sure that, as we take it back to committee, those are some of the things I'd like to make sure that we're including in either some franchise agreement or through this ordinance. Most people are less than satisfied with their cable company, and in a merger, I think customers are going to even get more nervous about their level of service. So I'm hoping those will be addressed in your committee.
I'll be assured of it, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I've been at the committee along with my distinguished colleague, Mike Ridley Thomas. We've done this in open session, and we've done the executive session at the committee level, briefed by the city attorney's office, and it's imperative that we receive this time so we can fully answer and explore some of the unresolved questions. And as Councilmember Hahn states, a lot of our constituents are concerned about the service, the build-out that was promised in many of the areas. My district includes many of the areas serviced by this company along with others. So I think information technology has been on the cautious side, the committee's been on the cautious side, so I would join my Chair on Information Technology to support this for the safeguard of the public, for the safeguard of the people who have the cable operations in Los Angeles. We want to do the right thing. We don't want to have another problem, and we've seen previous problems occur when we haven't been deliberate and been consistent and really taken the time and effort, and we definitely need this time to make sure, because there's still some unanswered questions that need to be resolved before we can finalize it and send it through. It's going to affect a lot of people, and it's going to be a contract for a number of years, so we want to err on the side of caution. So I would wholeheartedly support that and ask that we all support that and move that through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The chair now recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas. Or, Ms. Hahn?
Just one more thing. I, you know, I think what we're hearing, what we're finding in the survey in terms of customer complaints that actually make it to the city is one thing, but I do think there's a lot of people who wouldn't necessarily call the city after they've been wrestling with their cable company. So one of the things I would like to ask the department is to notify the neighborhood councils that are impacted by this merger, who are served currently by AT&amp;T, for their input into your committee and into our ultimate decision. This is really how neighborhood councils are supposed to work. We're supposed to notify councils who are impacted by decisions that we make, so in plenty of time for them to have input. This would be a great, in my opinion, issue to have neighborhood councils weigh in on your committee.
Permitting Ms. Hahn to speak on my time, and I think that's a good suggestion. And so we will facilitate, I'm sorry?
One thirty days is absolutely...
No, the, the appropriate entities will be duly noticed as to when the committee hearing will take place. And may I suggest to you that all of us should be conscious of the fact that there are franchise renewals underway, at which time there will be many more opportunities citywide for neighborhood councils to plug in. And toward that end, Ms. Hahn, I think what I want to suggest, that the two of us co-author a motion to cause neighborhood councils to factor into the renewal process, because there's many more opportunities there, and there's a greater chance for input and deeper understanding. And if that's in order, we'll bring that in, and I'll instruct my staff to draft it accordingly. That essentially concludes my remarks on this, Madam Chair, and I would just simply ask for a unanimous vote on this item.
All right, you've heard the request and the amendment that was read into the record. Members, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved, and we'll be back after going to committee within two weeks. Next item?
Item number six, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel?
Since we have been here a long time today, I won't talk too long. Just two things I wanted to mention. One is, for my colleagues, this is going to be a Valley Community Service Center in the San Fernando Valley for housing issues, something we've talked about for a long time, city's been working on. We are looking at particular sites that we will be able to place this facility and allows us to move forward on locating those sites. There was an issue that I think we have resolved, but just wanted to say on the record that it is going to a special municipal facilities committee that has agreed to meet in August to take care of it. So that is my intention and have not heard otherwise, because we do not want it to be a lengthy process in which to identify this facility. So I have the commitment of the CLA's office and the Housing Department that in fact we will come back quickly with a site for rent stabilization. So I just wanted to request an aye vote and say this is a positive step in our neighborhoods, and thank my colleagues on the committee for helping push this forward in the, in the San Fernando Valley, and we'll be coming back with a particular site and move quickly with the Housing Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. I just rise in support of this. As a member of this committee, I wholeheartedly supported this, and I too want to make sure that this happens quickly as possible. This is a great example. I'm actually glad we're voting on this this week, when we've had so much discussion here about how we can make city government work more efficiently, bring it closer to the people. And this is a first step, in my opinion, of, a good example of one of our departments decentralizing and regionalizing their services, so that there is no reason for certain people to have to come all the way downtown Los Angeles to access that department services. I'm also hoping that you'll be looking in the Harbor area for a site to do this very same thing. And again, I think this is what we're talking about when we talk about regionalizing our city departments. So I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Hahn, you stole my speech. Regional government, good job, Gary Petty and all the staff at the Housing Department. Very important to put people in the communities, to serve the communities, to make this city greater. Congratulations. Keep pushing. Let us know what more we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, item number 23, a motion is required in as much as there's two reports on one file. There are also three amended motions that have been distributed, A, B, and C.
All right, Madam, excuse me, item 23 is, before us, there are three amending motions. This has to do with the unfreeze, the hiring freeze, and the motions deal with various The, are the reports similar between Budget and Finance and Personnel? Are the reports similar between Personnel Committee and Budget and Finance?
Yes, the communication from the Chair of the Personnel Committee is concurred in by Budget and Finance, then Budget and Finance goes on from there and authorizes specific unfreeze requests.
All right, members, there are three amendments before us. They've been distributed already, 23A, 23B, and 23C, which deal with different additional categories of unfreeze to be swept up in this action. Mr. Zine?
Madam Chair, I would ask that if we hold this, we're still making some last-minute modifications and adjustments, if we could go on to some other items while we still clarify, because they haven't resolved it yet, and we're still working it out with the different departments.
All right, we will hold item 23 on the desk. Let's go on to the next item.
Item number 24, it's also a motion required in as much as there's two reports on one file. There's a Housing Community Development Committee report and a communication from the Chair of the Personnel Committee. I believe both of these may be adopted.
I believe that they look identical. Is there?
There's, yeah. If we, oh, sorry.
Yes, the chair recognizes Ms. Gruel.
Not that I want to, I have it in front of me here. We want to amend the housing report to include the recommendations from the Personnel Committee, which will direct the Housing Department to report back to council in three months on the use of the contracted temporary staff to convert property data from the rent stabilization system into a joint database with the code enforcement program and the status of the consolidated billing and collection process. So I'd like to, if Janice Hahn would second my motion, amending the housing report and pass the housing report before us.
All right, members, we have the Housing Committee report before us amended to include the Personnel Committee recommendation on that item. There's no other speakers. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Thank you.
Next item?
So recommendation would be to receive and file B.
Correct.
Item number 25, a member of the public wishes to be heard on this matter.
We have a card from Mr. Mort Allen on item 25.
This issue is a couple, a couple more hundreds of thousands of dollars on billboard litigation, and we are having an ad hoc committee meeting on the 30th to discuss this. I think before you give more money, we should get an accounting of how many millions have been spent on the billboard lawsuits, because it appears through our committee that it's kind of a game to file a lawsuit, appeal it to the appellate courts, and it goes on for years and years, and then all these illegal boards still stay up. I'm kind of at my wits' end with all the companies, including Clear Channel, and I think that we need to get this resolved, and my suggestion is that there's got to be either a commission, and I'm going to tell you, I've talked to the mayor, I think that the person that should head this up is Mike Fuhrer, who seems to really know about this legally without all the innuendos, and I think that just to keep on throwing money into these lawsuits that keep on getting appealed and appealed and appealed is a waste of money till we get an accounting of how many we've lost, how many we've won. It seems that we win them in the local level and lose them in the appellate court years later, and these same companies still have the same illegal boards up. So I think we need to come up with some kind of a shortcut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. There are two additional cards, Melrose Larry Green and Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if they'd come forward to speak on this.
In the interest of brevity, I'll be very brief. I echo the comments of the previous speaker. This is about billboards. This is about billboards. I wish we were so concerned about homelessness and getting a mass transit system going in the city and county of LA as we are with billboards. Frankly, I like billboards. Why increasing from $170,000 to $288,000? That's about a 65% increase in work order for a law firm. From $74,100 to $224,000, that's a threefold increase. I'd like to know, was there any kind of competitive bidding for these law firms? It's a good business. I should have gone to law school, not business school. For billboards! For billboards! What will they be doing with all this extra money? What's going on? This is, law firms that want all this extra money for billboards. Anyway, in the interest of brevity, I'm being brief. Thank you.
I don't see Ms. Hawkins in the room.
Well, you know what? Some of us are getting housing, and we don't, we don't care about your housing. We don't, I don't even like this place, man. I mean, this is my...
Okay, we're dealing on the issue of billboards right now. Okay. Members, this matter is now before us, which is a recommendation to extend the contract. Seeing no speakers, let me ask you, open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Item number 27, called special, in as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard.
On item 27, we have a card from Mr. Mort Allen.
I actually came down on the last matter, but while I'm here, I've just got a question. I'm one of these people from over the hill, the other people, and my question on this assessment is, on Ventura Boulevard, they're running, and they put a lot of underground cable stuff in, and then they, then the property owners had to go in and fix their sidewalks. Then they put in a BID where we're paying money to maintain the sidewalks. Then they've sold the sidewalks for advertising, and now they want an additional assessment on top of the BID, and I don't understand how you can have a double situation there. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, this is not the assessment itself. This is just setting a date of September 4th for the hearing on the assessment, and I'm sure you can talk to Council District 2 in the area which this assessment is located before September 4th.
Okay, thanks.
So matter, members, this is before us, which is the setting of the date for the assessment hearing. Yes?
The date on that, there is going to be a council recess on September 4th, and a motion is required to amend that to September 11th.
All right, Ms. Gruel moves. Ms. Hahn seconds to second to change that date to September 11th for the hearing protest on a, let street lighting assessment district. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number 31, also a member of the public wishes to be heard.
We have two cards on item 31, Mr. Melrose Larry Green and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
I'll be very brief, in the interest of brevity, I'll be very brief. All right. Please don't laugh when I discuss this item. I am not, I, this is the waiving of the fees for, it seems like you just send a letter to city council, and pretty much, almost any event, you can have fees waived. So 31B is the Annual Venice Hangwanji Buddhist Temple Memorial Service and Festival on July 20 to 21st. Fee waiver, $4,568. I'd just like to know more about the Hangwanjan, Hangwan, I can't even say it, Hangwanji Buddhist Temple Memorial Service. So if anybody knows anything about the Annual Venice Hangwanji Buddhist Temple Memorial Service and Festival, I'd like to know about it, because that's a lot of money to waive those kind of fees. I could see for the block parties, but, you know, so, that's all.
All right, members, these are the special events motions. Item 31, seeing no one requesting to speak, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number 37, called special, in as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard.
We have a card from Mr. Larry Green, item 37.
By the way, this will be replayed around 10 o'clock on Friday night, so if any of you are not at a, at a bar in Redondo Beach or dancing, you can see Larry Green on TV discussing this. Item 37, yes. No, I was in a Madonna video, but that was 10 years ago. Item number 37, now you may think this is nonsense, but for any act, item number 37 is relative to funding for a special reception in the Tom Bradley Tower Room of City Hall for the East Side Democratic Club on July 10th. Well, first of all, the event already happened, number one, this is July 18th. And number two, and it's only $127.62, but I happen to be Republican, and I don't know if it would sit too nicely if you were to have an event honoring, say, Barry Goldwater from the Hancock Park Republican Club. I don't think you transfer $128 of city money. This is for an event for the East Side Democratic Club. So maybe somebody can explain to me under what, under what legal theory controlling or otherwise this event is allowed to happen. And don't hate me, Democrats, don't hate me. Thank you.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Well, I'm just trying to sort out what law school it was that Mr. Melrose Green attended. Was that Brandeis Law? Thanks so much. Move the agenda.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Councilmember for the 14th District asked me to request that this item be received and filed.
All right, the request is to receive and file that. That is the motion, made by Ms. Perry, seconded by Mr. Ridley Thomas.
At the unction of Mr. Melrose Green.
So noted. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. Mr. Zine, are you ready on item 23? All right, let us return to item 23, the unfreeze motion. The chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 23, there's a number of items and motions, and I'll go through. Item 23A, I've been requested by my colleague, Councilmember Ray, as they had to leave, that that be referred to Personnel Committee. So it asks item 23A go to Personnel Committee. Item 23B, discussions between my office, the department, and the CAO, ask the council to receive and file my amending motion B and amend the wording of item 23. Budget Finance Committee report to replace the word blanket in number 6 and 7 to read "one time." And I ask for second on that, item 23B.
Mr. Weiss will second that.
Thank you.
Point of clarification.
Actually, 6 does say "one time," so just 7 needs to be changed from blanket to "one time."
Just 7?
"One time."
And... Okay, we have item 23B taken care of. Now, the next one is 23C, ask that to be moved as is.
All right, we have, okay, blanket is said later on in 6, so we'll change the word blanket exists in the Budget Finance Committee report to "one time." We have the 23 before us, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, amended to send 23A to committee, delete 23B, other than the suggestions of Mr. Zine, made to change the wording in the Budget Finance Report and to act on 23C. So that matter is before us in that order.
And I have more.
And you have more.
Thank you. I have an oral motion on also 23 that... I have an oral motion on also twenty-three that. Amen the recommendation, A, one, B, to read, fire platoon, field duty positions, period. That would be fire platoon parentheses, field duty positions.
All right.
And.
Excuse me.
And fire inspectors. So that again is field platoon parentheses, field, I'm sorry, fire platoon parentheses, field, duty positions, and fire inspectors. And there is one more. On twenty-three B three, exempt from one time only, blanket, to replace one time only. And Madam Chair, that's all we have for changes on twenty-three, and ask for approval.
All right, those changes have been worked out with the CIO, personal, Personal Committee Chair, and Budget and Finance Committee Chair. Those matters are before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. I will send that forthwith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Now is the time for public comment. Let me call on Larry Green, Mort Allen, and Craig Durfee, those are the cards submitted.
Well, listen, this is really what I came to talk about, what I'm going to talk about in public comment, and I'm glad I'm, this is, I hope you're all listening. Let me tell you how I start. I get about six o'clock in the morning. The first thing I do is I go running. I run for about an hour, usually from six a.m. to seven a.m. I know, fifty-one years old now, look how good I look, I know. But let me tell you what goes on, and this is all over the city of LA, and it's not just in my area of the beautiful Hancock Park, so well represented by Tom Labange. People are speeding, driving. I'm talking fifty, fifty-five, fifty-eight miles an hour on the streets in a hurry to get to work because the real traffic starts around seven, or seven-thirty in the morning. Seven-thirty, let's say, is when the bumper, the bumper traffic starts getting congested. And I, short of coming down to city council and talking to you all, nothing's ever going to get done if I don't do this. In today's daily news, they talk about a zero tolerance program going on in an area of the valley, which on Thursday, where they were making a lot of arrests, LAPD down there trying to do some anti-gang fighting, and rightfully so. But we need this traffic enforcement also, and I've got a great idea for all of you. You probably thought about it already, but this is something that I just thought about when I was running this morning. Whenever somebody sees a cop on a motorcycle, they slow down. So you've got to catch twenty-two. So what is Larry Green proposed? I propose that you have motorcycle officers, and by the way, I met Dennis Zine when he was a motorcycle cop, standing on the corner of Melrose Hall, he drove by one day. That's right, well. My idea, how about having cops in plainclothes on motorcycles? No, he didn't write me, he's making that up. Old politicians lie, right? He didn't write me a ticket, we did talk. But this is my idea, and it's not a frivolous idea. Let's have some motorcycle cops dressed up maybe as, L.A. figures, dressed up as maybe Hells Angels or something. No, 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 I'm serious. This is a major problem.
Thank you.
Unless we stop this, it's going to keep going on. If anybody wants to roll in me in the morning, you'll see these speeders.
Okay, we do have someone else who would like to speak?
Yes, Melrose, 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 let me just clarify something, it's very important. We don't want our police officers to dress like outlaw motorcycle gang members on motorcycles and pull people over. That won't work. And California vehicles, it prevents people not in uniform, not in distinctly marked vehicle from enforcing traffic regulations.
Excuse me, I did not know that.
And protection against people. So we do have a task force in the valley, it's proven very effective, we can do that in other parts of the city. But we can use undercover operations for enforcement, but not for traffic, and we would never support that, and it's not safe for the public to do that anyway. So I understand your concern about traffic safety, because I'd spent many of my years along with Tom Labange chasing down traffic violators. You were on foot, I was on motorcycle, but we have to do it within the principles and the confines of the Constitution. And while your procedure may work in another world, it's not going to work in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Green, there is someone else who would like to speak.
I know, but I just want, I will help in this for free, this afternoon.
Thank you. Mr. Durfee?
Member of the council, the president, I want to thank you for this last year of opportunity to come before this council on periodic basis regarding your dissent decree. I'm one of the sixty members of your Los Angeles Sinth Decree. I founded the organization and helped write the law in California. Advanced Peace Officer Training, Assembly Bill seventeen eighteen with Hertzberg, I wrote the Pena Code. And as for the audience who is interested in getting involved with community policing, that's thirteen, five, one, five point two five, the City of California Code, where I wrote that individuals or organizations can have an opportunity to partake in the law enforcement training. Those who have a mental illness like Margaret Mitchell or the, someone has a developed disability such as hard hearing or autism, since autism is one in five children have a mental health issue, Oscars, police officers have an opportunity to encounter these more frequently. I had opportunity to review your dissent decree as one of the members, form some form of pages. I worked with your contractor as I advised, there should be an inclusion of developed disabilities, and the end result, it wasn't included. And also the fact that I revised the police commission about this concern last Tuesday. As you know, there is a concern in Inwood, and because of that incident, there is the liability all the time for officers and their safety. And also there is a bill in Congress that I ask that you would consider, and that it would be the Mental Health Journal Justice Act that would conclude law enforcement and training that you still desperately need, and that's House Resolution twenty-one ninety-eight, or the U.S. Congress nineteen sixty-five. A concurrent resolution, House and Senate, seventy-one, identifies mental health and autism. As you know, we're sure the friends in the state and liability is always a factor. So I'd ask the city council to consider to come back under the motion and bring it back if you choose to, and ask the Congress, the senators, and the representatives of the state of Congress to move on this issue while it's still in the Assembly Committee of the Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durfee. That does conclude the public comment period. It's on the desk.
Motion's to post new referral?
They are so posted.
Councilmember requests for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on July twenty-third, and on August sixteenth, a motion is required for July twenty-third.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Ms. Perry seconds for July twenty-third to excuse Ms. Galanter.
The desk is clear.
That clears the desk. Are there any announcements or adjourning motions? Announcement, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Padilla asked if I would make an announcement about Artino, which is a Latino artist group, group exhibition. Their exhibition is called Expressions Without Borders, Expresiones Sin Fronteras, from July fourteenth to September fifth, but there's an artist's reception this weekend, that's on Saturday, July twentieth, from five to nine, at the El Pueblo Art Gallery on Alvera Street. There's refreshments entertaining, sorry, entertainment and hors d'oeuvres. For more information, call eight-one-eight, three-six-five, thirty-three-three, and that's sponsored by Councilmember Brad, the Mexican Cultural Institute, El Paso Inn, and Galleria Socito.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Ms. Perry? It's a adjourning, okay, let us ask now for adjourning trivia. The chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to ask Councilmember Garcetti to join with me. I read the paper this morning, Jerry Melton, who was a drama coach at Hollywood High School, and I know he was sixty-nine years old and he just recently diagnosed past, he was a great influence to the students of Hollywood High School. And what was so wonderful about his obituary in the paper this morning, it also had at the same time the story of his students getting together just recently on Tuesday to honor him on the Hollywood High School campus. From nineteen sixty-eight through nineteen ninety-two, he was a dominant force in the drama program for the students, many of them now hold professional roles on stage or behind the camera in various areas. He was born in nineteen thirty-three in Texas and came west here. He worked for the Walt Disney Company and later came along into education. He is survived by his wife, two sons, a daughter, and five grandchildren. This is Jerry Melton, who was the drama coach, award-winning drama coach for Hollywood High School. Thank you very much. I remember his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. The chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I want to return to the memory of Malana Bell Moss. She was born in nineteen oh seven and lived to the age of ninety-five. Longtime resident of the ninth house of districts, she lived on Fifty-Eighth Street for fifty-seven years. She was the wife of founding pastor of Mount Carmel Church, Missionary Baptist Church, also located in the ninth district. She was the oldest of six generations of her direct descendants. She survived by three daughters, Rosa Stanford, Patty Bell, and Sandra Bell, the adopted daughter-in-law Joyce Bell, twelve grandchildren, thirty-two great-grandchildren, and thirty-five great-great-grandchildren. So she lived a good life.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, do you just want to be a second on that? That concludes the council agenda today. You call the roll. Thank you. Council is adjourned.